We call the special board meeting for Wednesday, May 7. To order R 332 PM. Roll call please, Melissa.
Director Daniels.
President.
Director Jorgensen.
Here.
Director Loa. Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Oss.
Here.
Please join me as we observe. Thank you. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion?
Agenda adopted.
That's it.
Say.
Director Bankus.
I'm here.
Hi.
Director Jorgensen.
Hi.
Director Loa.
Hi.
Director Mal Pakem. Director Oss.
Hi.
The eyes have it, the agenda has been adopted. We 30 minutes. Director Odom, can you please make the motion to executive session?
I move that the board discuss negotiation for 40240, particular matters with the Colorado Springs Education Association and meet confer professional and educational support professionals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus. Director Daniels.
Hi.
Director Jorgensen.
Hi.
Director Loa.
Hi.
Director Mal Pakem.
Hi.
Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Oss.
Hi.
Hi, Savit. We will enter into executive session now and reconvene regular board meeting at approximately 5:00 PM in the boardroom. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started. Okay, good evening. We are reconvening in public session and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted as presented. And welcome all. The setup out here in the boardroom is a little bit different because we have a special meeting followed by a work session. So the setup is more for the work session. So it's good to see all of you here. As always, I request everyone in the room to please be respectful, civil, and courteous. In all your interactions, please follow the expected norm and professional decorum. So we are at 5:15, and at 5:15, we have a public hearing on the Mill Levy Override Plan Amendments to Program Implementation PIPs, and there are several of them up here. Melissa, do we have public comments? Okay, we do have a, we do have public comments, and the first one is Mr. Lyman Kaiser. And everybody knows this, but you have three minutes, so.
Let's see how this. Good evening, President Mal Pakem, Board Directors and Superintendent Gall. I am Lyman Kaiser, a community member with 25 years of history working bond and MLO implementation and oversight committee issues. I am currently a member of the Mill Levy Oversight, Override Committee, or Override Oversight Committee and the DAC. For transparency, I voted for all of the proposed Mill Levy amendments in all of the voting meetings because I had confirmed all proposals were legal uses of the 2017 MLO dollars and were being proposed for what I believe are sound educational initiatives. The comments that follow are mine alone and not intended to represent any organization or voting body. I recommend the board for placing this MLO amendment package on this evening's action agenda to provide closure and confirmation of board intent. Action this evening allows the board to either A, advise the Mitchell graduates' parents and community at the Mitchell High School graduation ceremony on May 23rd that the board has kept its promise to fund the Mitchell Promise Initiative because it values all Mitchell graduates, or B, explain to the Mitchell graduates' parents and community why it is not keeping its promise to fund the Mitchell Promise program. It is not fair to keep those students who have met the requirements in limbo. Most large organizations with significant philanthropic budget build those budgets annually in conjunction with their annual budgeting process in the fall. Delaying action until mid-June to allow Superintendent Gall to crash and burn trying to find private funding first for the Mitchell Promise Initiative is not the best use of his time. Both PIP 12, Mitchell Promise, and PIP 13, the preschool enhancement, have historical precedent in that the MLO 2000 Oversight Committee, the DAC, and the board strongly approved diverting MLO 2000 funds to fund full-day kindergarten in D 11 and the 2005 to '07 timeframe when the state only funded half-day, even though it was not initially a part of the ballot question because it was shown to be a good use of educational dollars. That did not negatively impact winning the 2017 MLO because it was determined to be a valid educational need. Why approve PIP 12? Harrison D 12 and other high schools around the country have implemented simpler programs with documented success. This resulted in the initiative being recommended for approval with the use of general fund money by the D 11 Fund Balance Task Force and later the board at the October 12, 2022, meeting. If we agreed in '22 that it was a good idea, but later learned it was illegal, why not now when the MLO funds show it's legal? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And the board also received your email, so we have the information. Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Asavedo.
Good evening, Board. My name is Rebecca Kenderdine, or Rebecca Asavedo Kenderdine. I am here today on behalf of the Mitchell High School students. I am surprised more of the Mitchell community isn't here as well to advocate for the Mitchell Promise. We need to all fight for the Mitchell Promise and not let it become the Mitchell Broken Promise. Board, I believe that you should stop squabbling and go ahead and vote to use the Mill Levy money for the Mitchell Promise. The 2017 Mill Levy Override was passed by the voters with the wording "shall be used to fund educational needs, including, but not limited to." The phrase "but not limited to" makes sense because without a crystal ball, the district's future needs cannot be predicted. The author is wisely allowed for the district to adapt to meet future needs. Although the Mitchell Promise could not have been perceived in 2017, the opportunity to partner with Pike Peak State College should not be dismissed. Students who have never thought college could be within their reach will now have the opportunity with the Mitchell Promise. 30 to 40 D 11 students are already signed into the program. We need to honor the Mitchell Promise. Over the past few years, these students have lost opportunities because the district made changes and did not consider the ramifications for the students. The district continues to make decisions without considering the students, and that's not fair. After all, we are discussing $200,000 out of $42 million. We receive $42 million a year from Mill Levy dollars. $42 million a year. $42 million every year, not even including inflation. Compared to your monthly budget, $200,000 is less than a nickel of your budget. The Mitchell Promise funding equates to less than half of 1% of the MLO money. So, not even 1% of the MLO money. The idea that the superintendent should be fundraising when we have these dollars sitting unused is ridiculous. The students need all of his energy focused on improving academic outcomes. There's no time to waste to appease the naysayers. This money can be a beacon of hope to the Mitchell neighborhood and can enhance the lives of our students. Why would anyone want to keep the board from helping our students? Without the Mitchell Promise, I worry that the students will be discouraged and could lose hope for their future. Please, put aside your petty differences and do the right thing for our students. Vote for the MLO money to be used for the Mitchell Promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the public comments we have. So moving on to the first action item, agenda item. It's the Contract Award Firm Transportation of Natural Gas. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item C 1? Oh, sorry.
I move that the Board of Education approves contract C 2023-1050 to provide firm transportation of natural gas to the Colorado Springs Utility Gate. If fully executed, this contract will expire June 30 of 2028.
Moved and seconded. Is the motion, the motion reads Colorado Springs Utility Gate, or is it Colorado Springs Utility Rate?
Gate.
Gate, okay. Just wanted to.
Chief Odom and Travis, if you want to come explain all those nuances.
Just to answer your question officially, President Mal Pakem, it is gate. That is the correct.
Then we got the motion right.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, Board of Education. With me tonight is Mr. Travis Whitley, and I believe the contractor is online. No, not yet, okay. Tonight I bring to you a five-year contract for continued services to provide firm transportation of natural gas to the CSU Gate. With us tonight is our project manager, Mr. Travis Whitley, and our contracting officer, Ms. Chantel Bridges, and from Cemetery Energy Solutions Online, the key account manager for the Western Region, Mr. Chad Hardwood. Approximately 13 years ago, the district decided to participate in two different utility rate structures with CSU. One for natural gas delivery, one is the commercial rate, and one is the transportation tariff rate. Both have different advantages to the district. In order to participate in the transportation tariff, the district has to enter into a tripartite agreement, meaning the district has one agreement with CSU and a second agreement with the transport vendor, which requires the vendor to enter into a third-party agreement with Colorado Springs Utilities. Currently, we have 38 meters or sites that participate in this tariff rate. This effort was competed under full and open competitive procedures and will provide the district with firm transportation of natural gas in ordinance, excuse me, in accordance with the city's transportation tariff. This contract is a one-year contract with four one-year option terms. If during any annual option year, the district determines that participating in the transportation tariff is no longer cost-effective, the district can revert back to the commercial rate structure with a 180-day note, written notice prior to November 1 of any given year. Before I, before I turn it over to Travis to give an overview of what exactly this entails, I want to cover a brief overview of the procurement process. We did issue a full and open competition on our Bonfire Platform. We received four proposals to evaluate companies could deliver the firm or uninterruptible natural gas. They had capability to perform the work, and the path's performance provides a high confidence rating and then price per decatherm. Do you know what a decatherm is? Travis is going to explain it to you. All of the contract terms and conditions have been reviewed and allow the district to terminate annually if a contract is no longer beneficial. If fully executed, this contract will expire June 30, 2028. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Travis Whitley to give you an overview of the technical aspect of this contract and to answer any questions you might have. And once he's done, this will conclude the overview and we'll turn it back over to the board.
Good evening, Board. Thanks for your time. So I just wanted to give a quick kind of synopsis. The last time this contract came before the board was five years ago, so I just thought at a minimum, we could just do a quick refresher of kind of why we do this and how it came about. So as Chris mentioned, we buy about 10% of our gas through, directly through Colorado Springs Utilities, the same way that we do at our house. It's very similar, larger quantities, but same idea. And then in 2011, District 11 was part of a consortium with a bunch of other large utility consumers in Colorado Springs, and we petitioned to the utility company to make this G 4T tariff available to us. It was not an option prior to that, and so we were, we, my predecessors were part of making that come to be because they realized there were some savings there that would be available to us if we were allowed to procure our own gas. So this is probably something that you all know. This is a sort of a synopsis of natural gas spot prices for the last 25 years, and it's just a reminder that this is sort of part of what we contend with every year, is that it's a volatile market. The rates change quickly and sometimes without warning, and all that to say, every dollar we can save helps us. This is a big piece of our utility budget, over a million dollars the last few years in gas alone. And so even modest savings there are a big impact on our utility budget. So a few just kind of nuts and bolts facts. We've spent an average of $882,000 annually for transport gas over the last eight fiscal years. The data prior to that is cloudy and hard to parse out, so that's eight years' worth of data. Over the last 12 years that we've participated, been participating in this rate, we've saved an average of $174,000 annually, totaling over $2 million today. And if I were in your shoes, I guess what I would be wondering was, well, how much work is this for us to execute? And so that's what that third bullet's about. I'm estimating about 40 hours a year for us to kind of manage and execute that contract. And percentage-wise, that $174,000 equates to about 17.5% less on average over the last 12 years. This is, these units are not particularly meaningful, but the yellow bars are our gas use year over year, and the blue bar is the rates that we pay for gas year over year. That is just sort of a, kind of a gut check graph for you all. Those rates fluctuate, as I mentioned, and there's that kind of peak in the yellow bars is sort of coincides with kind of the thick of COVID when we were ventilating much more than we usually do. Bringing in a lot of cold, fresh outside air resulted in more natural gas consumption because we had to heat that air. And so that, we're not operating on that schedule presently, and that decline in energy is kind of, can be seen in the graph. And then this is just a graph of our savings over time. So that bottom dotted line is the zero-dollar mark. So we started about $250,000 in the hole. There was a cost to convert the meters to be able to be billed this way. We quickly made that up, and then it's been, generally speaking, kind of an uphill line ever since then. So, and we're about $2.1 million today in savings. And then lastly, we reassess the viability of purchasing gas this way every year, and the idea is that if the scales ever tip, and for some reason, this, this is not working in our favor, like Chris says, we can always revert back, and it's actually, that would be at no cost to the district. So that option is available to us with a six-month notice to the utility. Yeah, and that's all I have for you. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments, thoughts? Director Daniels.
Can you explain what Ms. Odom said you would explain?
Oh, yeah, the decatherm.
Yes.
It's, it's, basically, it's a unit of energy, and it's one way that gas is measured. So like you learn in science class about a BTU. We purchase gas in MM BTUs, which is a million BTUs, and those are, for all intents and purposes, equivalent to a decatherm. So it's basically a measure of how much work the gas can do, and that's kind of how it's traded and sold is in decatherm, so.
And you're doing decatherm, which is why we're going up with benefiting from changing the meters and putting us in the black.
So that, that graph of the savings over time was basically, so that was just dollars. But the, the gist of the reason that margin exists is the utility has to prioritize price stability to some extent because us being their customers don't like our, our rate doing this every month. And the district, to some extent, can, we can place slightly less emphasis on that, and we do what is called, most often, we ride the market. And so there is an index price that we basically, that our rate fluctuates based on, and whatever that is at the first of the given month is the rate we pay for that month. And so as you can see, we're, we're able to buy gas cheaper than CSU on average. The, I guess the consequence of doing that is, is our rate is, is not fixed. It, it fluctuates sometimes widely, but month over month, year over year, it averages in our favor.
I think residents have the option to do that with utilities too. It's not well-known, but we have that option to just average it over time and pay that way.
That's true. Yeah, you can even load your monthly bill.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bankus.
Yes, particularly attractive in this contract is that it's reviewed annually, and if it's no longer in our best interest, then we can not only remove ourselves from the commitment, but there's no cost to withdraw. Is that a standard, a standard criteria in contracts when dealing with gas?
Director Bankus, it's Chris Odom. Could you repeat the last part of your statement? I think it was your question.
It was my question. Is that a standard component of contracts when you're purchasing natural gas?
This is Chris, and the agreement, the tripartite portion of that agreement with Colorado Springs Utilities does require that notification piece. The annual review is our in-house check and balance, if you will, to make sure we're doing our due diligence. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I find it as a very attractive component to contracts into which we enter, especially when it's over a long period of time, and I consider contracts for five years to be a long period of time. Is it possible to replicate that in other contracts?
Professionally speaking, as long as I've been doing the contracts here, which has been approximately 17 years, we do have an annual review. On the contracts that are firm-fix priced, those rates don't change, but we do review if we still need, we have the need. So whether or not we could get out of the contract, that option is in existence with all of our multi-year contracts.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Seeing no further questions, roll call, please.
Melissa, it must be your microphone because I can't hear you.
She hasn't called your name yet.
I'm going to turn everything on. Dr. Bankus.
Hi.
Director Daniels.
Hi.
Director Jorgensen.
Hi.
Director Loa.
Hi.
Director Mal Pakem.
Hi.
Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Oss.
Hi.
Hi, Savit. The contract has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item. This is a budget transfer request. Tesla Middle School relocation. Director Oss, can you please make the motion for action item C 2?
I move that the Board of Education approves the Capital Reserve Fund contingency transfer of $380,000 for construction costs related to relocating Tesla Educational Opportunity Middle School to the Tesla Professional Development Building.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, this is new information. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, introducing to the board, we had planned to come to June for this, but due to, can we say for one more month, supply chain logistics issues, and with the special meeting, we realized we could bring this this evening and take advantage if we get the board approval on the contingency transfer of the three-week, the three-week time period. Upon my arrival, we had asked just a couple of questions of how do we take advantage of what I thought, what I noticed during my interview process as a very well-served part of our student community, which is what we now call our opportunity academies. We have steady demand. We grow throughout the year, and, you know, to be honest, we serve students better than anyone else in El Paso County does when they reach this point of their academic journey. And so in, over the course of the year, I've had several conversations with our opportunity leaders on how do we get to this middle school space where we can continue to serve kids as well as we have in the high school space and offer our middle schools an opportunity to know that there is an alternative for our students who have presented challenges in that comprehensive setting. Jason is here with, from Tesla with his team to talk a little bit about that need. We've done a lot of work. I want to thank Jen Hotelian and the Capitals team and the facilities team on doing the back part research of what does it mean to actually open a school within a building space that doesn't have a school right now. The, the great part about this for me is, I understand we're coming full circle, that Tesla was actually named after Tesla, who was named after Nikolai Tesla. And so this, it would be great for me to be able to no longer have to say, why does the nicest building in the district not serve students directly? And so I'll turn it over to Jason for the update.
All right. Good evening. As you guys know, I'm Jason Miller, principal at Tesla. I brought with me, I'm Chantel Scheck Jones, who has been with us for 17, 17 years.
Thank you.
She has been the lead middle school teacher and currently is. We've transformed the middle school quite a bit over the last several years. When I took over, we were at the Wausen Campus. Currently, we're located at the Longfellow Building. We moved our high school and middle school, both of them at the same time when we moved over three years ago. During that process, it brought up some concerns and stuff, which Chantel will talk about now. So I have Jody Fletcher, who is our assistant principal, and Fran Liddow, who is our dean currently, and so they are here to answer questions as well, but I'm going to let Chantel do most of the talking.
Hi, everybody. I talk very well in front of kids. I'm actually shy in front of anybody other than kids. So. So I actually am the Tesla math teacher. I've been there since one year after I graduated from CC, and so I actually was in the second floor with middle school for the first five years that we had. But I do want to talk about the issues we're struggling with now. So currently, as we know, middle school kids, they look up to certain people, and then they try to emulate them. And so because our high school has kids all, or well, students all the way up to 21, because we are credit recovery, it causes all the way up to 21, because we are credit recovery, it causes us a lot of issues with our 12 and 13, and sometimes 11-year-olds in the same building. And so, I've experienced more kids leaving campus with older siblings without telling anybody, and then we're scrambling around, freaking out that, like, a kid got lost. We've had kids vaping in bathrooms if they end up getting into a high school bathroom. Right now, we actually have a set of bathrooms locked specifically for middle school, trying to keep that safe. We're escorting them from class to class, which now that we're all teaching high school classes as well, that becomes a little bit challenging. But, just in the attempt to keep them safe, we're now kind of just giving up the few minutes that we have sometimes to run to the restroom or whatever we need to do as teachers. The other, oh, yeah. So, the other main issue, I think, is that also, high school is trying to recover credits, and traditional, I guess you could say, well, no, not even traditional. All middle school kids are absolutely rowdy and noisy, and as much as we try to keep them kind of calm, it's difficult. And there's a part of us that also feels like it's a part of middle school. And so, when we're transitioning, when we're having the blowouts that our middle school kids that struggle in traditional settings have, are also then disrupting the high school kids who are there, really trying to get their life back on track from whatever choices that they made. And so, it kind of makes it difficult, you know? One purpose is, the purpose of high school is credit recovery. The purpose of our middle school is actually to try to rebuild their successful behavior habits and their academic rigor, so that we can hopefully get them back into traditional high schools, where they can experience all the extracurricular activities. I mean, I went to Palmer when we were undefeated state champions, and that whole entire experience was just incredible, you know? And so, our kids do miss out on some of those experiences. And our middle school kids are exceptional kids that just haven't exactly been trained about kind of let success habits of school. So, by having our own middle school in the second floor, it makes us, first of all, we started off with 30 to 45 kids at the beginning of the year, the first five years that I taught here. And that's because we pull from District 2, we pull from District 3. Immediately when we got moved into the Wausen building, our attendance was cut in half, and we were starting classes with about five. I actually believe that if we had more teachers available to teach more than three classes of middle school, we also would have filled that. So, that 60 number could be bigger. Like, I can see that. And it's because a lot of our kids were able to come from, and we know that the south side of our area is also a more challenging area with more struggles and poverty anyway. It was also able, it was also easier for us to keep them safe. There's the, what, double doors, the stairwell. And when we were in the middle school, they actually still ran professional development throughout the whole entire year in the two big rooms, 116 and one, or whatever the other one is. And then, all the way down that hallway, that's 110, were all professional development. We also had a full high school, and we never had any struggles keeping the middle school and the high school separate, because all the resources that we needed were on that second floor. The kitchen for cooking electives, the cafeteria, we had a computer lab, the rooms are big enough to run stations, and do whatever things that you need to do to rebuild the kids' skills, to get them back into those traditional settings. And then, also, it just helps us with the two different schedules that we're running. Either, we have to be on the high school schedule, which isn't exactly enough time, because middle schoolers need more transition, or we're on different schedules, and then the high school bells are disrupting, we're disrupting the high school when we're transitioning. And so, having our own space just allows us to actually accommodate the middle school kids appropriately, instead of trying to accommodate them with high school rules. We can then have a specialized discipline system. We can work on specializing reward systems that are appropriate, appropriate for the different grade levels. And the biggest thing is, it just keeps them away from adult students, which I think is ultimately one of my biggest struggles that we deal with. And then, kind of the last thing that I just have to say is, then, the other ideas that we're trying to propose about the block rotation through teachers, and this four-day work week, I am actually the only teacher who has survived middle school for more than, I think, the longest may have been about eight years. And that was a struggle with a lot of emotional struggles. Our kids are difficult. They've gone through a lot of traumas. And hearing those traumas and helping them rebuild through those takes a toll on us. And so, this idea, like, because it's even becoming harder for me. And I've also told everybody that Tesla's my baby, and unless they close it, or something happens, I plan on retiring from Tesla. And it's becoming harder. And this year, being able to teach a high school class and just having that break of maturity has made me feel like it, you know, it just kind of re-energizes you. And so, this idea of being to, being able to rotate also then helps us all not get burnout for the middle school teachers. And I also believe it helps our kids understand that you do have to be the same way, even if you don't know and have a relationship with somebody, because I think a lot of times in life, our kids really do what's great for the teachers that they care about, and then they don't for others. And so, I also see this as a way to teach them about social life, because I have also had four different principals in my 17 years. And if I only treated the ones that I liked appropriately, I wouldn't be standing here. So, I do believe that the idea of the rotation helps them learn life skills. And this just also helps all of us dealing with our most challenging students in our district. It helps us continue to do what we do and still take care of our own selves, because it's, it's tough supporting them through the things that they've been through. So, that's what I have.
All right. You're up next, I believe. So, we did take, we did take a conscious look at, this does create some displacement. We have grown into Tesla. If you build it, they will come. And when you walk, we have taken up a lot of the space. As you heard from Chantel and Jason, Tesla used to be a Tesla, and so, fitting the middle school to the second floor does come with some size adjustments. And Jason will introduce Jen Hotteling to talk about how we have pre-shopped these conversations with our professional development team, and how it's actually, I kind of think, a win for a lot of them in some new upgraded spaces.
Yes. So, I do have to say, I've been at Tesla now for nine years. This is my fifth year as principal. The other four years, I was an AP. And the time that I've been there, we've grown every single year. Our numbers have. We've never lost students. We continue to grow. Since the pandemic, we've continued to grow. We're out. One of the reasons we're looking at this as well, and Chantel didn't mention this, is, at this point in time, we have no room for expansion. And we have people knocking at the door wanting to come to our school. So, just sort of, you're aware of that. And this is why we're asking for these rooms and stuff as well. And you can step up and do the rest of the talking on this part.
Jason, you can have my job. I like to just hand it off to people all the time.
Good evening, Board, and good evening, Superintendent Gaul. So, our team has been meeting with the teams at Tesla. There are several of them that have grown into the spaces that they have over there. And so, part of this was to figure out how do we best accommodate moving them into another part of the same building. So, we're going to keep them at Tesla, but move them to the first floor. And we're going to do some office build-outs and some furniture changes to help make that team comfortable on the first floor. The nice thing is, like they've been saying, Tesla used to be an education facility. So, there's a lot of things that are intact that we don't have to do from a facility standpoint. They have a eyewash and a shower in the science room. They have an art space that's appropriate, appropriate flooring. They have a cafeteria on the second floor that has a warming kitchen. So, we've talked with Janine Russell about accommodating meals out of that location, and they're good, good with getting going on that. So, logistically, it's a doable transition. And like Gaul said, for some folks, it's even going to be a little bit of an upgrade for their area, where people have been doubling up on office space. They'll be relieved a little bit, because we'll be able to build out some offices and areas for them to have that opportunity. And I'm not sure if, mine's at the very end. I can pull up, sorry. And we'll just pull up the, the floor layout, and we can show that to everyone. And the teams at Tesla have been really great. We've had multiple, multiple engagements. Tamara Assavado has been a part of that as well.
This was the previous one.
With them, just to make sure that, you know, we don't negatively impact moving folks around. So, sorry, when this comes up, I'll show you. So, we're relocating this team to the east wing. And when we say east, we're talking about the, well, the east side of the building, but there's two, two levels there. The garden level, that's an entrance off of the parking lot, that back parking lot. And then, it goes up to the first floor. So, we're basically staying on that side of the building, and we're not coming over to where the auditorium is. So, we're keeping all the teams over there. We also study the amount of hours they use for professional development in person, and training opportunities they provide at Tesla PD. And we found out that if they booked them back-to-back, and again, and this is not ideal, but hypothetically, if they booked them back-to-back on just workdays, just days that are actual workdays for the district, they could book all their trainings in five rooms, which would be very tight. I mean, that's them turning them every, you know, one right after the other. And without that, and it's not even necessary, they're going to have 13 training rooms still available for them to use. We've also had great conversations with Jason and his team about utilizing the second floor during new employee orientation, when they need extra space, because middle school's not in session. If the four-day work week is allowed, that would be even more beneficial. A lot of the PD training that happens on Fridays could also be held on the second floor still. So, we would still be able to have the, the breadth of in-person training that they currently have. And they, I know they plan to expand that, and that will be doable as well. So, there's, there's still, you know, minor logistics to figure out as far as storage, potential conference rooms, and the different layouts. We're still working with the teams on that if they want to change them minorly. But, this is essentially what we've come up with. So, the top corner there is going to be the Student Success and Wellness Team. That's part of Valerie Skates' team. So, that's where they would, where they would be housed. And then, if you scroll down, you can see there on the right, there's some examples of what we refer to as either cubicles or hoteling stations, or, oh, we came up with a new word for that, because my last name is Hotteling. I can't think of it now. Touchdown stations. So, touchdown stations, so that when we have other groups, so you can see at the bottom, there are some groups that will have cubicles, and some groups that will have more touchdown stations, because they're more site-based. So, they're not in the building, working from that location for too many hours a week. They may come there, do some reports. They have some private phone conversations. We've looked at some potential even, like, private phone booths to bring in, which nobody's loved yet, but they might warm up to it. They look like something straight out of Europe, and it's kind of fun. But, so that was, that's a possibility as well. But, these would be in the areas for the sped group, and for the induction and empower coaching group. And currently, induction and empower coaching is separate. So, they'd be put together in the same location, which we think is actually an advantageous move, to have them working collaboratively. So, there's some, some great advantages and gains. Professional Development, their area is in the center there in green. They maintain that area. And that's where they would, they would remain. That's where they are now. So, there's no shifts there. The only possible additional cubicle spaces is for if Tesla PD hires more staff, then we would add cubicles to the training room on the right. So, this includes, you know, moving their storage, moving people down to different areas. And while we can get the furniture, so part of the reason we came to you guys as early as we did, and didn't get to have a work session prior, is to get the furniture here on time. We need to get the order out very soon. And then, we are going on the street with an RFP for the office changes, and the build-out's there. And then, we'll, we'll have a timeline for when that'll happen. If we can't get the construction completed prior to 1 August, we'll move everyone down, set them up as best as we can while we finish the construction. That's pretty much the bulk of it. So, that's the, the, the logistics and everything behind our request for the transfer for the 385, or 380,000 for their capital programs.
So, when have you ever heard me say, "Let's open a new school for only $380,000"?
Anything more you need to add, Principal?
Yes.
Okay.
I could. I'm gonna pull it up here in a second. I'll be fast about it, too, because I know you guys have a huge agenda. Can I just follow yours?
Is this the same document that we?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, for the most part. So, we're moving over, guys. Sorry, bored. Opens up four classrooms for expansion at our current locations for our high school and stuff. You guys can read through that. It was a proposal. It has not been approved or anything, that our high school, not our middle school, sorry, moves to a four-day week, which though, then would actually open up the current housing of Tesla, if they needed it for professional development as well. It also is an air-conditioned building in this district, which is highly sought after. So, that opens up as well. Currently, middle school and high school share cafeteria space, which leads to some issues and stuff, as you guys would know. It would also allow us to expand our high school. So, I'm gonna move this next thing here, guys. So, be able to share teachers. I came up with this idea of rotating our teachers through our middle schools and our high schools. Currently, we have, as Chantel said, our middle school teachers are teaching our high school students, because we didn't have the FTE allocation to offer all the classes that we needed with our high school. So, we pulled from our middle school, because our numbers have been so low. But, it does lead to burnout with our middle school teachers. So, what we've came up with is that they'll do three-week rollovers, three weeks at Tesla Middle School, essentially six weeks at the high school, and then back to three weeks at the middle school. Essentially, saying that they'll have 12 weeks throughout the school year, where they'll be with middle school students. The rest of the time, they'll be at Tesla High School. It allows us to serve our middle school and our high school at the same time, without asking for additional FTE on that part. With that, we also have a projection of, if we open up the rooms, going from 250 with our high school up to 330, at least doubling our current population of our middle school, since we are going to be pulling a lot from District 2, I'm seeing with Panorama and Carmel, them being within a five-mile radius. So, with that, we are asking that we, our dean, who is currently our dean, moves to an AP, which is truly not a financial thing. It just is, I mean, it's a title change for the most part, because they pretty much get paid for the amount of years she has. About the same. So, but it'll allow then for us to have an administrator on both campuses at all times. And I'll be going back and forth between the campuses. Currently, I have one admin assistant. I'm asking that she be moved to an executive admin assistant, as well as with our register and my other staff assistant. Being overseen, they're going to be overseeing multiple campuses. And I'll be honest, it's hard to keep them now with the workload that I'm laying on them, with how much they're getting paid. And, I mean, they're looking at jobs at Pizza Hut, and they're making more. So, I'm just gonna put that out there. So, I, I mean, if we're increasing their workload, I'm saying we'd probably need to increase their pay and stuff as well with that. And then, I would ask for an additional person to be over at the middle school, who's there all the time, as a touch point for enrollments and stuff. All right? Any questions?
Let's just give it a minute. Are you done with?
I am. Done.
All the presentations?
[laughing]
Thank you. We do have a public hearing at 6:00 PM, so I'm just going to, if you have any more things to add on for a minute, you have the opportunity to talk. Do you, you guys have anything more to add on to it?
I think they've covered it really, really well. It, Tesla, working at Tesla, this is my fifth year there, 35 in education. And I started my career many years ago in alternative ed. And our kids have become even more challenging over the last five years. We've got to get the middle schoolers away from our high school students. That's, to me, the biggest plus of all of this, because they are starting to emulate really bad behaviors. And they're already coming to us from a background of trauma. So, and I do think, you know, making Fran and helping our admin assistants, registrars and stuff, boosting their salaries, is huge to maintain quality people over two campuses.
Okay. Thank you. We are almost at 6 o'clock. We have a public hearing at 6:00 PM for the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. We don't have anybody signed up for it, so it's back to you. You can come back.
He was hoping.
Okay. Questions? I know that Director Bankas has a question, so I'll go to her first. Dr. Bankas?
Yes, thank you for explaining so well, both from Chantel and the principal.
Yes, thank you for explaining so well, both from Chantel and the principal, how it is that we can retain our middle school teachers by giving them the flexibility to move from high school and then go back to their middle school kids. Thank you for thinking of that, I think it's really innovative, and I think that it really gives not only the teachers, but the kids, the opportunity to see how flexible people can be. The other question I had was about, it seems that the enrollment is, is constant, it's a, I thought I saw that on a slide. So what is the, what do you see as kids coming into the middle school and staying for their whole middle school experience? Do, do you find a lot of kids coming in and out? And then the other question had to do with registration. Did I hear you do your own registration? It doesn't go through the central, central office for kids to enroll in Tesla?
So currently, we do utilize some of the central enrollment, but a good portion of it comes to us initially. Just because we're more of a hands-on with the enrollment process and walking them through what Tesla looks like and what we can offer for them, and looking through what they need. With the credit deficiency of a lot of our high school students that come to us and stuff, we have to have our registers. As well as our counselors are looking through transcripts and stuff and trying to a lot of times pull from multiple sites where the, where students have came from. A lot of times when our kids come to us, we're looking at, they've been at maybe four or five high schools when they're coming, and we have to track down all those transcripts. So currently, we do, I mean, we get people sent to us from central, but for the most part, they start with us and they, our register does most of the registration part of that. And then the middle school part, I'm gonna have Chantel.
Yeah, and so Director Bankus, Superintendent Gahl here, that's by design. So many of the students that land at Tesla and many of our other Opportunity Academies are internal dialogues with families based upon not a good fit at the first location. And so central enrollment is in tune with everything that happens. But what we don't take is somebody in that transition period of changing schools midsemester or mid-year, and then send them downtown and get the paperwork filled out. And so this is what we would just call a localized execution of still a centralized process.
And to add that, as being rated as an AEC, an alternative education campus, students have to have a risk factor to attend us. We have to have ninety percent or more of our students, we're at a hundred percent. We carry that for the most part, that they have risk factors. Those risk factors have to be filled out and they have to sign on that and presented to us before we can accept them into our school. So that becomes another part of the registration. The middle school part, I'm gonna have Chantel talk to, with them coming and going.
And so the continual enrollment for the middle school is more because, right now, being with high school, we start with maybe five to seven kids at the beginning of the year. And then as kids are struggling in their other locations, kind of like the high school situation, then they come to us. We don't actually lose many kids unless they make a decision that then would get them expelled. And then most of the time, we take the expulsion deferment right back and put them on a safety plan. So we really, like, kids have to work hard to leave us. They stay with us, and a lot of the time, they then continue on into the high school. And the kids in our high school that came through the middle school are more successful in the high school earlier on. And they actually more consistently graduate in junior year instead of senior year. And I do boast also that we send quite a few kids that didn't plan on college in seventh grade to college as well. So we retain our kids unless they do make one of those mistakes that we absolutely, our hands are tied.
Yeah, and I do want to comment, Chris Prant is here, I asked him to join this evening. We have seen an increased number of middle school expulsions, of which we don't really have the opportunity to find a deferment, because we end up then just passing them from a comprehensive middle school to a comprehensive middle school. And not to say that anyone in middle school can't actually handle all opportunities for our children. But normally, if you are being expelled, I see Jim Nation in the back there from Swiger, you likely would have been expelled from North and likely would have been expelled from Holmes. Every once in a while, we can find a very specific fit, where if we believe that a defersion, a deferment is in the best interest of the student and the student population, we'll do that. But having a space now where we know that we've seen that, that, there's something special, I'm just gonna call it Watson, right? There's something special that happens at the Watson campus of how it is that we capture kids after they have not succeeded in the traditional setting. And it's one of the things that really sets District Eleven apart. And is that celebration of how it is that we never stop throwing out a rope with a rope with a knot on it for a kid to be able to grab onto. And here, really, the conversation space is, we need to do that at the middle school level more specifically and intentionally. And the best way to do that, our recommendation, is to not have to do that on the same campus at Longfellow.
Thank you. Director Bankus, do you have any follow-up questions?
I just have a minor one, and so I'm thinking that build-out is another word for reconfiguring workspace, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not adding any square footage, we're just rethinking existing square footage to take advantage of the opportunity here for Tesla.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of more board questions out here, and I'll get to them. One of the things that you mentioned is that there were five or six students at the beginning of the year. And by the end of the year, what does your enrollment look like for middle school? Like, at this time of the year, what do you have?
So I think we have twenty-five total.
Okay.
And, you know, a lot of the time, it's after count day, we kind of get rushed. And then we get another one kind of around Christmas time when our kids are having more traumas. So there are times that, like, we'll start getting three kids a week in our middle school. And so it builds exponentially quickly after maybe the first month of school, when they realize that the other places are not working. And so trying to catch them earlier actually would be nice as well, before they're on that last leg of expulsion.
Usually, most of these are District Eleven kids that come from other middle schools.
Currently, because when we got moved more central in our district, then we lost because the transportation back then had to be parents getting their kids here. And so when we were closer to the southern side, then we were always full. And more of our kids were actually from the other districts as well. And so if we, I mean, we would probably end up with a wait list if we couldn't expand into space because of how many kids were needing it then, and that was seventeen years ago. And I think it's worse now because of COVID.
Yeah, so from an enrollment strategy, we believe that it is both a retaining of students that we currently have, to not lose them. Remember, we talked about our dropout rate and our loss rate. And we do believe that there's an attraction of gaining students from neighboring districts, particularly to the south, where we had that demand signal before. There is not a standalone alternative middle school in Harrison.
That is correct. None, yeah, there's not one in Colorado Springs, we'd be the, be it.
Mostly, we, hopefully, we get some of these students before October counts.
Right. That would be the goal. If we could get approval today, we can get a strong communications campaign going.
We could.
Director Daniels?
Thank you. That was part of my question, transportation and parents. Were the parents involved with the decision for you all to move from Watson? If I remember correctly, you were, I think you hinted to it, you were at Tesla. They pulled you out of Tesla, brought you to Watson. I remember the contention about that whole Watson process. And now we're like celebrating you, right? And now we want to go back to Tesla. And we did talk to parents about the logistics of getting them there and what that's gonna look like. Or did we talk about a bus, hop, skip, drive, something to get them there?
Some transportation stuff.
We have, we've talked with CJ and the transportation team. So it's on their radar screen as, as to how they're going to accomplish it. I think they're still working through that. And it didn't sound like we had a lot of bus riders at the time. And I know that their, their enrollment changes pretty dramatically, so I don't know how quickly that could change. So we can continue those conversations, but we have, we have started them, talking with them about getting them from that location to Tesla.
So two more things, parents said yes, we will shift from Watson to Tesla without any drama?
So currently.
From Longfellow to Tesla.
Yeah, currently we're at Longfellow.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And to be honest, our eighth graders are the majority of our middle school. They'll be moving to ninth grade and staying with us, so they'll be staying at the same building that they're at. And we have very few of the seventh graders, they're gonna, will be moving back to us next year.
So we have no one to ask yet.
We don't really, exactly.
So we, we don't have carryover sixth and seventh grade middle schoolers at the current Tesla location to ask if they're okay with a relocation of the physical nature of the middle school. Because the eighth graders will matriculate up into the formal ninth grade.
Yeah, and actually, the few seventh graders that we've been talking to, a few of them were not going to be able to come back to Tesla because it was actually where it is, and they now get to stay. And she's actually, the, the one that I'm thinking of actually is just there, maybe for academic reasons. And so we actually are so then able to work with her on excelling her better and her academic stuff as well. So I think that the parents care more about the supports and the growth that they see in their kids with us than they care more about, I think it's maybe a seven-minute drive. And so I, I think that it, it's a priority because the kids do grow so much and they struggle so much when they first come to us, so.
And, and there's just one other thing on a different note. Have you guys heard of Bridges Out of Poverty? It's a training.
Okay.
That I don't know if a lot of people have been exposed to. But just something to consider when it comes to the population and demographics that you work with. And it could be a little bit more supportive in working with that population of students. I know that that training was offered in the city. I don't know where it stands right now, but Ruby Paines, Bridges Out of Poverty, has been what I felt, an amazing training for that conversation.
I appreciate that, we'll definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you. Director Nelson?
This is very exciting, so thank you, Mr. Gahl, for coming up with the idea. Thank you guys for presenting tonight and just giving us the context and really understanding the need. I want to just really quick follow-up on the transportation question. You currently do get busing at your location now at Longfellow?
We do.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. So it would just be then adding the, the additional stop-down at the Tesla location? Okay.
That's great.
So as far as, it sounds like in your presentation, there would be an addition of one FTE and then two reclassifications. Is that a correct summary?
Yes, of ESP.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that already, I guess, in the budget, or do we need to?
I'll have to clarify that as we present the budget this evening.
Okay. It's, you know, obviously it sounds reasonable that you would be asking those things, so we'll make it happen. Just gotta make sure we get the details right.
Yeah, we had the, so we had the additional FTE for the ESP, and then it's actually three reclassifications and a reclassification of our dean to an AP.
Okay.
So the dean to the AP comes at no cost, what do you?
Well, minimal.
Minimal.
It is minimal, so.
And then I was just curious, because I know that the, all the middle school principals are working on this design thinking lab. And so have there been conversations in that that have helped initiate this? Or any feedback from the middle school principals on, yes, please?
Jim, are you a part of that setting? Can, can you come forward and just give a, a quick summary on where you all have landed on the challenges with extreme levels of unmanageable behavior?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Not so much on the design thinking, but it has been an issue in the past, I've been here eleven years, and it's, it's an issue, what do we do with students who are really struggling? And as Mr. Gahl said, we can move them from one site to the other site. But if you're moving a student who's struggling from a school of five hundred to another school of five hundred to a school of seven hundred, it, it doesn't make much of a difference. What we look for is a, a program that we can now move our kids to prior to being expelled, prior to that, the worst thing we can do to a kid. And have them get that additional support at a, a alternative education setting. Then in the possibility of coming back if they feel comfortable, if not, they stay in a smaller setting where they get that additional support. So not so much in the design theory, but as a group, and I can't speak for the whole group, but this is something that comes up quite often, of what we can do with our kids and what's the next option that we could do short of expulsion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we don't want enrollment to grow because that means there are kids that are struggling. But at the same time, it's a fact that we're facing, and I love that you guys are just jumping in, trying to meet these kids where they're at. I mean, that's incredible, so thank you for the service you're providing to these kids. Just one side note, I drive by the Longfellow building often on Maisland, and there's no sign for Tesla.
So I've been asking for a digital marquee for years, so if you guys could put that in the budget.
I'm pretty sure we approve that.
We approve digital marquees. We'll go back and make sure we get signage for the Tesla High School. I, I do want to comment on the idea of, do we want to work ourselves out of business from Opportunity Academies? And the students have said very clearly that the answer to that is a resounding no.
There will always be a need, unfortunately.
Well, actually, and fortunately, when, when I do a student sounding board, and we are set up in a larger circle and the students are here, and Debra, you're in that setting with me, as is Tamara, as some other executive cabinet members are often as well. But students, we will use adult language and we'll ask our students from Bijou and Tesla, well, where was your home school? And students will say to me, Bijou is my home school. And I'll be like, no, 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 where did you go to high school before, you know, where you ended up at Bijou or Tesla? They're like, no, no, I've been at Bijou for three and a half years. Students are selecting our Opportunity Academies as opportunities. Because there's something different that happens in our Opportunity Academies that unfortunately isn't really scalable for us yet. And if you haven't seen just the wraparound way the adults are talking about and experience at Tesla and what they want to build at the middle school, that's harder to do at twelve, sixteen, eighteen hundred kids in a building. Doesn't mean that we don't strive to be able to get to that space. But they are built in with this ideal that they just look at the day differently. And what it takes to be at an Opportunity Academy isn't necessarily the same thing that it takes to be at some of our other schools. And so I've, I've thought about that a lot, Director Nelson, of like, wouldn't it be great if we just never needed an Opportunity Middle School? And then I was like, I just think that the world has just fundamentally changed for the generation of kids that are coming up through it. That there's always going to be a kid who wants, and the four of you right now are representative of dozens of your staff, that are just really needing that experience. And it's great that particularly in a system of choice, this is really a pathway, like, Opportunity Academies are a different pathway. We normally talk about pathways from a program perspective, but from a student experience, this is an intentional landing space for families and students. Of which, of all the complaints I get from parents, it's not coming from Opportunity Academies. They feel the wraparound supports, they feel the services, they feel the investment in their children in an effort to get them to, to graduation and beyond.
What percentage of your students would you say is they're actively choosing to come versus it's like they've been referred?
High school, I'd say we're at ninety-nine point nine percent.
Oh, really? I thought it was.
They choose to come, I mean, they choose to come to us because they've not been successful other places. And they see us as an opportunity, which we are. And we have a pretty good success rate, and I'm not, I don't know the number off the top of my head of graduations. I mean, since I've been with Tesla, our graduation numbers have went up every single year. So, I mean, we're, I mean, growing in that aspect. And the word's out there, I mean, they, kids know, they can come to us and they can accelerate their education if they want to and get their high school stuff done and move into college credits. Or they can come and make up the credits that they weren't able to earn at the comprehensive high schools.
So at the middle school level, it's more of the kids that are getting referred from other schools?
Middle school, we have kids that choo- choose to come to us because of the smaller setting and stuff. Parents that choose to send their kids to us because they've had siblings that have came to us and they're like, we want our other siblings or other kids to go to your school as well, and they choice them in that way. We do have kids that are placed with us or at, were, were asked to, that they come to us and stuff. And a lot of those students are successful, and then the siblings do follow them.
Yeah.
And the same thing.
I've taught whole families. And I actually have a few kids now of kids that I taught.
Wow.
They come back because of the success.
For the people online and Director Bankus, she says she's taught whole families and that she has kids of kids coming back now that she's teaching. So, okay, that helps me have a better understanding as well.
Can I also just add, I deal with a lot of.
Come to the mic, so the people can hear.
I deal with the truancy for the middle school. And what we found is that so many of the middle schoolers are coming because of truancy issues. So they're, they're scared to go to the bigger schools. So we act as a stepping stone, right? Our hope is we can get them into a setting, they start getting comfortable with our staff, and they start realizing that actually, maybe I could go to high school at one of the traditional schools. schools. That is ultimately our goal with the middle schools, right, with the middle schoolers, is to help them get past that anxiety.
Yeah. So you guys are serving multiple purposes. It's not just the, before you get expelled, this is the place to come. It's, okay, that helps me have a better understanding, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Which is one of the reasons why we changed the language to opportunity academy instead of alternate education campus. We wanted it to be a place where people felt you can choose to be there, it's not a last choice.
So I will, I will say Tesla has always been an equal opportunity school. Um, it, it's always been labeled that. The other A C's are following in our footsteps, so. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
We have no competitive edge here at all. It doesn't happen any earlier.
Okay, Director Otte.
Thank you. I want to follow up. Um, I had essentially the same, uh, question as Director Nelson about essentially the ongoing financial cost of the changes. Um, and so, understanding that we will get to that later. The, you said three classifications, but there's only two on the screen. Can you tell us what the third is? So we've got current.
I'll be, I'll be honest, um, so I, I was talking to, um, my register today, um, and I, I've always talked to my admin assistant because she's right outside my office, so I know where she's coming from and the struggles she's coming from already and what we're asking of her. She, um, I mean, steps up all the time, um, translates for us on a daily basis, steps outside of her job duties are, and goes above and beyond to help our, um, students as well as our, um, families feel so, like they're wanted at our school and stuff. Um, and so I see that, and so I put that on there. And then I started talking to our register, who I don't see a lot, cause she is overworked and underpaid as well, and, um, is probably currently still at our school, um, doing stuff for graduation, as well as, yeah, since four o'clock this morning, and is working on summer school stuff as well, as well as our, um, staff assistant and stuff, who is stepping up to the plate. So they are all going to be taking on extra duties as we move, um, the middle school over to Tesla because they're going to be, be working both sides, um, and going that route. Um, and I'll just.
I'll just offer that we bifurcate the budget conversation of the requests on the tables, the contingency transfer for furniture and construction requirements. Tonight we'll make a non-action introduction of a budget. When it then comes back for action, we will have a specific line item for personnel costs associated with this move if the board is in support of that as a contingency transfer approval of the bulk of the money that we had asked for. But this was, um, for the budget transfer, not for personnel, but for construction. And, um, without clarification that those individual items are in there, we'll do a line-by-line review with HR and find out what those requirements would be that would be a change from the non-action item of the board introduction tonight to an action item in June for the board's approval.
Okay. Yeah, this is a non-recurring cost, so it doesn't include personnel. I'm the, uh, director.
Just taking advantage of the guy I got here right now. But that, that is sufficient, and I appreciate Superintendent Goll's comment, um, because yes, I, I do understand, and it's important for our public to understand, this is just the non-recurring, but we will see recurring expenses too, which is understandable if, if you are expanding and, and working. My only concern then, for, for the record and looking ahead is, if they're already overworked and you're giving them more work, then you're just burning them out for higher pay. So you might need to consider at a future date that you have to expand your administration and your ESP staff, so.
Can I add to that?
I'll leave it at that, feel free.
Okay.
I'm gonna, thank you.
So, um, adding to an ESP position is, I, we don't fill ESP positions. I'm gonna be honest, um, they take home twelve hundred dollars a month. I mean, if you guys think you can live on twelve hundred dollars a month, look at your checkbooks. It doesn't work.
Not with the new salary schedule that you just turned up. We, we, we are taking care of our ESP.
Okay. I, I know, no, no, you are, you are, but I'm just saying, that as a, that's a concern, because I'm not going to be able to fill those positions. I have people now that are overworked, you are correct, but are doing the job except. Yes.
Your turn. Director Loma.
Well, I remember when they, they moved you, I, I thought somebody had lost their mind. Um, I didn't like that at all. Um, um, so going, going back is like, uh, somebody regained their thoughts. Um, so that's where you belong in the first place. Uh, I'm partial, um, my niece is a graduate of Tesla, and so is my daughter-in-law, and so, and you probably know, I won't mention the name because they'll get mad if I say their names.
We do know.
But, um, um, they enjoyed their time there. They had opportunity to go back to regular, um, a regular high school, but they didn't want to, just like you were explaining, they, they wanted to stay where they were, and, um, they did. And, and, um, my, my son married her, and, and she's doing okay. She's doing well, actually, she's still in college, she's doing good work. And, um, having babies and in college at the same time, so that's pretty good for my daughter-in-law, and my, my niece as well. So a partial of that, I understand your work well, uh, and I'm, I'm also looking forward to our bike trip.
Yes, that's coming up.
But I appreciate everything, and Chantel, your, 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 your passion, your spirit is evident in your proposal, uh, made me want to go back to school. So you keep that up, girl, okay? Thanks.
We keep telling her that, sir.
Director Daniels, you have a follow-up question?
Yes.
If it's a quick one, so we can move on.
Honestly, it's not a question as much as it is an acknowledgement. I volunteered with the college readiness program we had here in D eleven, and one of the things I noticed was that Tesla was in the room.
That is correct.
So I want to make sure that you know, I know you're doing the work to help advance them to a larger conversation, and that it is a heavy lift. And the people that do this work obviously has been going on for decades, right? So thank you for being in it, and I wanted to acknowledge your efforts with getting them to those programs, because that was every quarter, and they showed up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions here. Uh, I've got a couple of questions, maybe some of them go to Superintendent Goll to, um, and maybe to Ms. Hortling. Uh, the move to the second floor out there, uh, it's not going to impact the professional, professional development that takes place in the building for our staff? We still have enough room and capacity there for professional development? Sometimes our committees meet there, all, all those things?
We do. We have based that on the numbers from last year, and I know we've talked with Linda Sanders extensively that they plan to extend their, expand their, um, in-person offerings in the coming year, and we feel like we can accommodate that as well, especially if this is accepted for their proposal for a four-day, and we can still use the upstairs on the fifth day. And we're also going to continue to use the second floor. They can use Longfellow.
Yeah, but it's not, middle school's staying on a five-day.
Middle school is staying on five-day. It's only the high school.
I keep mixing that up, I'm sorry. Thank you, sorry. Um, and so the other side of it is that the new employee orientation, which is my understanding, is one of the heavy lifts for the district, when we have all the teachers coming in. Um, they use a lot of, um, Tesla P D for that, and the upstairs will be available for that, because middle school will not have starting.
Okay.
And we're going to be flexible and work together. Um, yeah.
And were other locations considered when this was brought up, like in the district?
We, we did look at squeezing into some of the underutilized spaces, and really, uh, there was one, the familiarity of the program with the building. And secondly, its draw to attract folks from boundary areas, uh, has a primary reason to use this as a space. Uh, schools within a school, uh, can work, uh, having an opportunity school within another school, um, would be a heavy lift, I think, for most of our underutilized buildings right now. Um, I, I'll, you know, admit that I had come to Jim, uh, earlier in the year and looking to use the Success Academy, of which was not, uh, filled due to staffing challenges, uh, for Swigert this year, because that had been kind of a small school within a school. Some of our middle schools are doing one-off programs in that regard, but they're usually, uh, I wouldn't quite call them temporary, you would call them, um, uh, uh.
Long-term.
Short to midterm spaces where they're able to reintegrate students back into their student body setting.
Perfect. Uh, that leads me to the next question, which was about the Success Academy. I, I remember your assistant principal came and talked, uh, he's now the principal at Saban, uh, Daniel Carragher, he talked about the Success Academy. I think we have some similar model at Holmes Middle School, uh, where the Holmes principal came and talked about it. Some of those positions are being funded with S R money, so possibly they could run out, so those, if we don't have those Success Academy in those middle schools, then you have the capacity to absorb those students now.
We do, and we've worked in the past, um, uh, when we were at the Wausen campus, um, we had middle schools that would, um, work with us, and we'd do essentially a dual enrollment. Um, they'd stay enrolled at their home school, they'd come to us for a short stint, and if they met the qualifications and stuff and walked through it with our staff that we had set up, we were able to offer them to go back to the middle school that they came from, a lot of times they chose to stay with us.
Yes.
So.
All but one.
Yeah. Okay, and the last question, um, about the high school, you talked about the four-day schedule.
That has not come forward yet for a decision.
At some point in time, it'll come back.
We're working that internally.
So that's not the plan for this August, starting in this August, or potentially it could happen upcoming August?
It's a proposal. We're, we're just, yeah, we're working through things.
Okay, thank you. You have a question?
Well, you were talking about professional development, and for the life of me, um, with all our half-empty high schools, I don't understand why, um, we were, we, we would be haggling over area in the building that the middle school will be occupying when we have half-empty high schools, that would suffice in that type of training. I don't see why there should even be a shared need with, with, with the other, uh, properties available. So, um.
That's always an option.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from the board? And, uh, you also mentioned some of the behavior challenges that happens right now with the middle school students. You expect those kind of challenges like vaping and things like those to at least diminish?
We will be able to address them in different ways, um, than we can currently. And we're not going to have, we won't have them meeting up with high schoolers in, in bathrooms and stuff. I mean, that will be taken away, so. Not that, that everything's going to be perfect, but by any means.
And then we can work in such a way the students' access to the first floor is limited or not there, so that, that, it's kind of two different spaces.
Good point. We lock, we looked at the logistics, and we're going to create, um, a badge system that doesn't allow the students to access the floors outside of the second floor, um, because we're going to have professional development staff and everyone from District eleven still coming to do their training there, and we want them to still feel like they're coming to a, a building where they can learn, um, and be away from their, their schools. So we've, we've looked at that, and we're going to have those things in place. Um, we're going to have signage for their entry, so they'll enter on the west side of the building, um, kind of, kind of where you're pointing towards the fire, um, training area, um, not the, not the main front entrance. Um, so then our teams will still come in through the main front entrance and through the parking lot, um, at the bottom part of the building where early child development is. So we have, um, tried to make sure we're, we're crossing all those bridges, so we don't commingle, um, the students in their program with professional development as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. So the motion that's on the floor is, um, a budget transfer for the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the construction costs related to moving some of the staff from upstairs to downstairs, and also setting up the classroom upstairs and all the furniture that goes with it and everything else, um, if I got that right. The motion was made, it was seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Otte?
Aye.
So the motion has been, um, approved, so we look forward to visiting your school in the fall.
Two schools, you can come visible.
Yeah, two schools. We often come to the Tesla building, so this would be just going upstairs, if Director Nelson doesn't trigger the alarm like what she did.
Well, so when this idea was on board docs last week, I was there for the DAC meeting, and I said, well, while we're here, let's go look upstairs, I'm not that familiar with it. So we went up and started walking around, and then the alarm story going on. Did not cross my mind.
I was just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hopefully all your move goes well then. And we'll see you in the next couple of days at graduation, some of the, some of us at least. Is it tomorrow?
No, it's Friday at nine o'clock.
Yep.
There were some, yes, at Wausen, there were some invites that were sent out wrong for nine-thirty. It's nine o'clock, so anybody listening.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll be following all summer long, we'll provide an update, uh, informally to the board, uh, over the summer if we run into any hiccups with some of the logistics. We appreciate the board's support.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
Okay, the next action item on the agenda is the Mill levy override amendment to PIPs twenty seventeen dash one, twenty seventeen dash three, and twenty seventeen dash eleven, with introduction of new PIPs twenty seventeen dash fourteen, twenty seventeen dash fifteen. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for action item C four?
I move that the Board of Education approve Mill levy override plan amendments to PIPs twenty seventeen dash one, comprehensive student support model, twenty seventeen dash three, education support professionals attraction and retention, twenty seventeen dash eleven, contingency reserve fund balance, non-recurring, and the introduction of new PIPs two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, undesigned in flash, inflationary, sorry, uh, fund balance recurring, and twenty seventeen dash fifteen, curriculum instructional materials and instructional software as reflected in the plan amendment spending plans attached.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This item was presented, um, by Chief Odom, um, last week, uh, at the May tenth, uh, regular board meeting, um, and, uh, several PIPs were presented to the board, and this was a combination of several PIPs, uh, put together, uh, because the board, uh, did not have any specific concerns about these PIPs, and, uh, uh, they wanted them combined together so we don't have to handle them individually. Uh, do, does the board have, do you have any new information to present? Okay, does the board have any additional follow-up questions on these PIPs or comments before I roll call? Okay, and, uh, I appreciate all the work that you guys did, it went through the Mill levy override oversight committee, and also, um, the, um, various, um, uh, this, uh, we are taking care of some of the salaries and the inflationary costs to various people, uh, various of our staff members on this. With that, roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Director Loma stepped aside.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Otte?
The I's have it, um, and so this Mill levy override plan amendments has been approved by the board. So moving on to the next one, uh, item number C five, Mill levy override plan amendment for new program implementation plan, twenty seventeen dash twelve, which is the Mitchell Promise. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item C five?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve the plan amendment to the two thousand seventeen Mill levy override for the new PIP twenty seventeen dash twelve. Mitchell Promise for a pilot project.
I'm sorry, can you press your thing? There you go, repeat it.
Start from the beginning.
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the plan amendment to the two thousand seventeen I move that the Board of Education approve the plan amendment to the 2017 Mill Levy Override for the new PIP 2017-12 Mitchell Promise for a pilot project initially for Mitchell High School, graduates only who meet academic and other eligibility requirements. This PIP will run for four years, beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2027. The annual budget for this PIP is $200,000.
Moved and seconded. So, this item was also discussed last week and presented and discussed at that time. Are there any additional information, Superintendent Gall, that you need to present at this time?
The only additional information I can add is we're running the numbers on expected costs for this year's cohort. The total program cost in partnership with the Dakota Foundation is roughly $65,000, split 50/50 is in the low to mid 30s is what we would be expecting as a last dollar amount of the MLO to go to this cohort class. I can't be final on that yet because these are last dollar amounts, so we have to see what students are able to bring in completely on that. But based upon the trends that the Dakota Foundation has seen from Harrison School District and the student population that they serve, that was the estimate that we got from their team this week.
Okay. Thank you for the update. And one other comment or feedback from you, you are still in the process of exploring philanthropic opportunities if that is...
We have started those conversations. We thought it was right for the students at Mitchell to know whether or not they were going to have the board's support on this prior to graduation. As we continue, and my obligation will always be that we will use these as last dollars.
Perfect. And we had a citizen comment that mentioned the same thing, that trying to figure out the donations of philanthropic opportunities in the next two or three weeks while these students are in limbo, that may not be a fair, a fair thing to do for the students. So, the board has to come at one way or the other moving forward. You have anything more to add to this, Chief Odom? Director Daniels?
Thank you. I was thinking of maybe having an amendment to the motion and thinking if, since it's a pilot program, could we look at the first year, funding the first year, come back, have all of the data, see what we've succeeded in, what it's looked like, and then move forward with how we would find funding. That would give us time to do fundraising. That would give us time to really know the bottom line, and we could have time to just discuss the program even further. So, if we made an amendment to four years to put it to the first year with coming back after the first year and looking further, would that be a possibility?
Chief Odom, is that something that we do with Mill Levy amendments, where we go year by year basis on that? If you've got any thoughts, and Superintendent Gall, if you've got any feedback on that, too. Go ahead. Do you want to?
I'll let Chief Odom answer first since you asked her the first question.
My only concern is that the promise is for a two-year endeavor. And if you were considering modifying the motion, I would ask you to consider maybe doing a two-year stint instead of just a one-year. Two years allows for the first cohort to get through the two-year program. But to answer the question, yes, sir, we could do it annually.
Okay. And I would just comment on this cohort this year at 38 was certainly small. We were anticipating, we were hoping to get to over 50 next year. And so, to have that, that, these juniors rising to be seniors, if we did a two-year amendment, I mean, they would only have one year of funding guaranteed. So, we could be making just a one-year bet on kids at Mitchell. The kids at Mitchell had no idea that this was in the works when they were at Mitchell. We were trying to communicate an obligation to a community and an investment specifically to Mitchell that said, instead of talking about a reconstitution from 2020, let's talk about kids now sitting at the dinner table that says, Mom, Dad, I can go to college, to Pike's Peak State College on a scholarship if I work hard and I go to Mitchell High School. And so, how do we make Mitchell High School the destination? I was there again just today, and I thought when I walked down that hallway and saw the Hall of Fame on the wall there, how many kids walking down the Hall of Fame believing that this can be a place where they get that opportunity that they might not have it. I also think it's important to share with the community that this year alone, we've spent over $1.5 million on active credit hours for students in college. Now, not all of them are Pike's Peak State College. They are spread across a myriad of different concurrent enrollment, dual enrollment, and early college opportunities. Just because we teach them within the four walls of our building should not restrict students from having access to having college credit hours paid for them. The inequity piece that has always come to my mind here is we are all in on dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, and early college opportunities. Many of our students are just not academically prepared for that rigor in the 11th or 12th grade. We see many students taking advantage of that, and we hope that they continue to do that. But these are really, in essence, the same things just in years 13 and 14. So, I would, I would not encourage an amendment to the four-year pilot. The four-year pilot grabs the kids that are at Mitchell right now and gives us the opportunity to have this fulfilled in a longstanding way where philanthropy can be a long-term solution and not whether or not I can sell the rights to Gary Berry Stadium in the next three weeks. And if anybody knows anybody who would pay $35,000 to have their names on the side of Gary Berry Stadium, please introduce them to me.
Yeah, thank you. So, you heard Superintendent Gall's response to that. Director Daniels, you can still make a motion for an amendment. That's a vote prerogative, and if you make such a motion and you get a second for it, then we will call a rule call and see if there is support for such a motion. But do you have follow-up questions to?
Yeah, well, my question, my question becomes, again, we know it's a pilot program. We have not discussed anything of what it's going to look like, what we're expecting. I know we want our students involved, and the $1.5 million has been in place for a number of years. So, we're not trying to say we don't want Mitchell to have what they need. We've known for, I would say, decades that Mitchell has always needed support prior to the reconstitution, and that was a way because of being on the clock when it was not moving with all of the state achievement that everybody keeps talking about, and that everyone, you know, there's many times it's been said, we can do what we want. But I am saying that there is still a conversation with the community of us making sure that we are listening to them and the Mill Levy. And along with the comments and along with knowing the budget is tight, and we have to be willing to acknowledge it is about the budget. We can promise, but we also have to be accountable to make sure the money is there before we do those such things. And I'm just saying, is it possible for us to have a win-win where we're thinking of everybody's acknowledgement that, yes, we need to do this, yes, we need to move from the reconstitution conversation, which we've known, we're going to have to find programming for Mitchell, but what does it look like if we can do an amendment for two years and see where we are, not to say that we wouldn't continue it, but it would give us time to find the money? And if it is going to be fundraised, which this, talks about this a lot, there are people out there who want to help with all kinds of projects. What if it's possible to have the two-year? Not saying that it's absolute, but a possibility.
Great. You have made that argument and statement.
So, I'm willing to make the amendment that the PIP will run for two years, beginning July 1 through 2023 through June 30, 2026.
Can you make a formal motion?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
You can make a formal motion, okay, and get a second for it, and then we can go through it.
Okay. I move that this PIP will run for two years, beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026, or is it 2024, 25? And the annual budget will be $400,000, $200,000 for us to look at the program. It's a pilot program. Let's make sure we're successful and we find the money.
Okay. You made the motion. Is there a second for it?
Clarification.
I don't have you on my thing.
Hold on, I can do it.
Well, I know, but you haven't punched your button to make yourself active up here on my screen. Okay, there you go.
Point of clarification. Would it be $200,000 annually then, Director Daniels?
That's what she was talking about.
That's what I want to clarify, is she mentioned $400,000 and $200,000. So, $400,000 total, $200,000.
Per year.
Per year.
If we're budgeting $200,000 for the first year, but Superintendent Gall says, based on talking to the Dakota organization, it could be around $65,000. Again, being a pilot program, we don't know where it's going to fall.
And we got that. You said that three times.
I'll second.
You seconded it. Okay. Now, the motion is on the floor. Are there any comments or feedback on the motion that is on the floor before we call, roll call on this motion where it's been amended only for two years? Director Loma?
Well, the irony is the roadblock that's coming forth, just mind-boggling. This will help our most at-risk part of town and students. And it's clear that the vote gave us this opportunity. Either we know what we could for education, or we don't. And the Mill Levy is very clear, included what was happening, but it left it open for future opportunities. It's pretty obvious. So, I am completely against this amendment.
Okay. Director Jorgensen?
Yeah, I would rather us even look at it being extended.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you press your button again? Go ahead.
I would look at us even maybe extending it past four years or allowing the annual budget to be flexible based on more Mitchell students taking advantage of it. So, I would consider those amendments, but not this one. Thank you.
Okay. Director Nelson?
Mr. Oll, can you remind me the original promise? It was for four years. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was, the pilot was amended through the MLO OC and then the budget, the DAC Budget Subcommittee to be a four-year pilot. Is that correct? Can you confirm that, Chief Odom?
When we made the, the promise back in the fall, like before MLO?
Yes, it was the same. It was for a four-year period.
Yes, I copied exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. So, because our original promise was for four years, I think that we should back up that promise with the dollars in hopes that we can find philanthropic donations and to support it. If we end up sourcing the money in other places, it doesn't harm anything to have this Mill Levy sitting at the four years. We can make the change later at that time, once we secure those fundings, correct?
That is correct.
There was a PIP that was just approved as an overflow space as well, right?
There you go. So, also, I guess I'll just chime in here on how I will vote on this. I will be in support of this PIP.
If you want, you can come back to that.
Okay.
For this motion on the floor?
Okay. Then I will not be supporting the motion on the floor. I would like to keep it at the four-year.
Okay. Director Ott?
Thank you. Director Daniels' amendment does not impact the length of this Mitchell promise. It merely requires that we revisit this. It shortens up the timeframe for using the MLO money. So, if we can't find the philanthropic funding for this in a couple of years, we might have longer-term issues. So, I just want to point that out, since there seems to be some confusion that this cannot continue for four years without this amendment. Thanks.
Director Jorgensen?
As a public comment that spoke tonight, it's less than half a percent of the annual operating budget of the MLO. So, future funding woes, I don't see being a big implication. We've got a designated way for us to spend that money, and it's less than one, less than a half of 1% of an operating budget out of MLO. Even if it stays there and we never have anybody rename Gary Berry, we're still going to be able to take care of these Mitchell kids, so.
And that MLO, even though it's $42 million, it's my understanding, if I remember the numbers right, it's grown to about $49 million now because of the inflationary, inflationary approval that the board has, inflationary clause that the board has approved every single year. Director Nelson?
Just in response to Director Ott's comments, I think we understand that it would be coming back to the board in two years for consideration. In my mind, it's more of we're putting a stake in the ground, communicating to the Mitchell community that this is going to be there for the next four years. And it's, it's not that we're going to wait and see. We want to make that commitment now. So, it's more about the communication piece and the upholding the promise piece and just knowing those students, being able to know that they have guaranteed money. And the students that are freshmen right now can be guaranteed that they will be able to have this when they graduate. And if we only moved it to two years, then they might feel as though they don't know if it's an option for them. So, it's more about the communication to the community.
Right. Hang on. We will come to that in a minute. The one follow-up question I had for you, Ms. Odom, this program, it was mentioned out here that this is a pilot program, but this program is in Harrison School District D2 at this time and has been very successful. And how long has this program been there at Harrison School District? For several years, right? Four, five years?
I don't know exactly how long, but it's been several years, and it's been very successful. And they do have, I was trying to get exact data that shows how it is reducing dropout rates and increasing matriculation rates, which is why we added that as a data point to this particular plan, this PIP.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And to follow up on what Director Nelson talked about, too, this is a way that we can communicate to the Mitchell community for the incoming freshman class that four years down the road, that this is going to be there, that that promise is there for them that four years down the road. So, it is an attractive opportunity for incoming freshman class to be there. Director Daniels, do you have any final thoughts before I call the questions? Okay.
I have a comment. So, to the Mitchell community, you've known for a long time that we've been committed to you, and this is no different. And we also have to consider the community that voted for the Mill Levy. And it has been said many times that if we cannot get people to support what we're doing, they're not going to pass. It has been constantly uplifted that the bond didn't pass because the community doesn't want it. So, we have to make sure that we're taking both sides of the, taking care of both sides of the conversation, especially when it comes to the community also having the other side of not being pleased with what we do. So, this conversation is not that Mitchell will not get what they need because we still have to build on the promise. This is just one aspect. All of the other high schools have had concurrent enrollment and dual enrollment for years. We're just considering Mitchell. So, it's not like it's, it's a mystery. I'm simply asking if we can make sure that we can honor everyone because people do watch what is said and make choices, not just based on their students. They make choices based on the adults and what they do and say as well. So, it was simply a request. It is not a stick in the road, like this is not supporting Mitchell. We've been wanting Mitchell taken care of for I don't know how long, and they've been on the clock for years, and it just got started.
I just want to correct for the record, there's been no delay in concurrent enrollment or early enrollment opportunities at Mitchell. Matter of fact, Mitchell and Coronado take most advantage of Odyssey early college opportunities. By the commonality of those three schedules, we're able to use Odyssey early college teachers that actually go to Mitchell and deliver those early credit hours. There's never been a delay in offering that at Mitchell in comparison to every other high school. This is just the first place where we believe that we want to make a scholarship opportunity for years 13 and 14 and not force that internal to the 12-year system.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor. Director Bankus, I have a note here that you had a question. Do you want to ask the question now, or can I call this motion that's on the floor before we get to the original motion?
I'd like to speak to the amendment that's being discussed at this time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Part of that comment that I would like to make, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to see another way in which to accomplish supporting our students at Mitchell. But in thinking about this and listening to both sides, not many on both sides, but those who have an interest in the success of our Mitchell students, listening to both of those and looking at the intent of the Mill Levy override, we are all about supporting students and their achievement. This is an opportunity for some of our most needy students at Mitchell to be able to plug in, get motivated, and see beyond the four walls of their school. I think that this promise is truly a promise. It's something to look up for, up to. It's something to look forward to, and I think it's important for kids to understand that it's longer than a year. It's longer than two years. We're going to ask for a whole four-year commitment from us as a district, and we're asking no less of our freshmen coming in. Four years to a freshman sounds like a really long time, but it's what's going to be necessary for them to be able to be successful. Four years to a freshman sounds like a really long time, but it's what's going to be necessary for them to be able to be successful. And this promise says, we're here for you. We're looking at the long-range goal. I will not be supporting the amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Director Bankas. So this has been discussed. Every board director had an opportunity to respond. So I'm going to call the question that's on the floor, which is a mil levy. What Director Daniels proposed is that this be for two years, June, July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. That motion was made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankas?
No.
Director Daniels?
No.
Director Jorgensen?
No.
Director Loma?
No.
Director Mel Packham?
No.
Director Nelson?
No.
Director Oat?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails. And we had, by a margin of six to one, the motion failed. So now we have the original motion that is on the floor, which is for four years to support the Mitchell promise. Let's get back to the discussion for, and I know Director Nelson, you wanted to provide some rationale for how you are going to vote. Director Nelson.
Just wanting to circle back to the concern about the voters that supported the mil levy override back in 2017 and is this outside of the scope of what they agreed to? Just repeating kind of what has already been said, that in the question, the ballot question, it states to be used as, to fund educational needs. And knowing that the 2000 mil levy override did not originally include pre-K, but the board at the time saw that it would benefit students to incorporate PIP funding pre-K. And then the 2017 mil levy override still passed. So I think I personally do not have concerns that we are operating without integrity, that we are not doing anything outside of the ballot question. It was something I took some time to consider, and this is where I've landed. So I'll be supporting this fully.
Okay. Director Daniels.
Mitchell community southeast, I want you to know that we've been committed to you for years. And the question was merely a question. It is not an absolute, nor does it mean that I don't look at you and see your need that has been there for decades. So I'm going to vote yes, that you get your four years because you deserve it and you've worked hard. And I want you to know from me personally, it had nothing to do with you not getting what you need as much as it is asking a question.
Any further comments before I call? Director Hart.
Thank you. So many, if anyone listened to our last meeting, they know that I am very concerned about the fact that the mil levy override oversight committee, which is steeped in understanding the issues around the mil levy override and the funding question itself, the ballot, very ballot question. And so for anyone who wasn't watching that and will wonder why in the world I'm voting the way I'm going to tonight, the answer is that we made a promise too fast to this community. And I, I do support the Mitchell promise. I completely disagree with the way that this, that the district has gone around the funding for this and the, I don't want to say the treatment necessarily, but the committee that is charged with being, holding the district accountable for these funds is going to come back to this district with a report, annual report, in theory, and it's going to have to say that they made a recommendation and the district and the board did not take it. And so it's the principle of the thing for me, I think $35,000 sounds a lot easier to fundraise than $200,000. So I would say get out there and do it. And if it's the superintendent, if it's maybe the people who think that we can fund other things with community dollars can step up as well because we've had that conversation as well around things as simple as feeding children. So I do support the Mitchell promise again. I just have deep concerns about us getting ahead of ourselves, and it's a slippery slope. And I'm looking long-term. When we go back to the voters and ask for a bond question, I want to be able to say we did what the mil levy override oversight committee asked us to do. We're not going to do that, but it's a great cause. I can't argue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to provide some clarity too, the mil levy override oversight committee, like the district accountability committee, is a recommending body. They provide recommendations to the school board. The school board can weigh the pros and cons of the recommendation. We are an elected body. We tend to look at all the comments that were made and the feedback that were made, and then we take totality to make the final decision. That's why we are an elected body out here. We do recommend, we do highly appreciate all the recommendations that do come from the DAC or come from the mil levy oversight committee. But there have been numerous instances when I've served on this board, when recommendations that came from the DAC was something different to, and what the board ended up doing. That doesn't mean any disrespect for the district accountability committee. It's just that maybe with additional information that we have, we made the choice that each board member was comfortable with. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, just to comment on, on the MLO and the, and the committee. I was still teaching in 2017. I saw that as a citizen. I mean, I've grown up, I've grown up in D11 my whole life. You know, right by, right by Dory is where I grew up in the backfield. Our backyard backed up to the baseball fields, and then I have a house near UCCS right now. And I remember as a teacher voting yes for this and thinking, let's give them what they need. Let's give whatever the funding is and, you know, read the whole thing, and that's great. And how would we know five years ago that, you know, where we would be today? And so I think, you know, there is, yes, paying the tribute to those that have done the work. And I realize that the MLO oversight committee has gone from, you know, basically standing room only in a 40-person waitlist to now six active members, which isn't even a quorum in some places. So the fact that we're going to, you know, disrupt service of 38 Mitchell students who are then 38 future voters who said, I got a promise from D11 and they fulfilled it versus upsetting a few members of an MLO committee right now. The cost-benefit analysis there is, is pretty, pretty clear to me. So I'll be supporting it for the, for promising these kids to get what they need. And again, half a percent of the $42 million operating budget. Give me a break. Let's, let's do.
Half a percent of $49 million. Yeah. Director Loma.
Well, I just have to reemphasize the phrase to include but not limit it to. I mean, if one can argue that pre-K and the, the promise, the Mitchell promise does not address educational opportunities, then I would, I would love to have that argument. And, and that's one reason why the wisdom whoever wrote this to put, to include but not limit it to, because no one knows what the future holds in regards to education, technology, whatever. So it's very clear that the mil levy, this is in, fits the mil levy requirements. Now, in regards to committee, I believe the committee was 40, supposed to be 40 people?
No, it was initially 70 people applied for that committee. It became about 20 people. It's now like got 15 people. Only six of them are active.
Correct. So my point, that's, your lead is my point. If it's 20, in any, any organization, that's not even a quorum to make a decision. If you're going to have 20, you should at least have.
50%.
That means 11 people should show up to make a decision. So you had a quorum of six who were three were in disagreement and three were in favor from what I last heard. So in a committee that should be 20, where half of a quorum showed up and half of that quorum didn't like it, tells me that that committee needs to be restructured and, and have to do a better job because they're not representing the community as well as somebody on this, this dius considers. So if they want to be taken more serious, they should fill their committees, have all their members there, and then really take a, a legal vote, have a quorum. Without that being there, then it's the job of this board to make a decision. And based on my understanding of the mil levy, based on the need of the community that we're serving, based on the opportunities and the perhaps thousands of lives that will be changed because of this one decision, for me, it's an easy call. So I'm looking forward to this vote.
Thank you, Director Loma. Director Daniels, you have something new to add? Okay.
First, I wanted to acknowledge Superintendent Nigal acknowledging that, yes, we've always had dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment at Mitchell. I know several students with support from a former staff member that have helped them get into college. That is correct. Also, I also recognize from being in this community for a long time, there are people that show up to take advantage of the district, to tell them what they're not doing and what they should be doing. And we could just make decisions without any consideration to what has been done. And at the same token, we do need to take care of our students. I just would like a win-win. I would like to have the community that says yes or no on these divisive moments when people tell them not to and have an opportunity to recognize these are what future issues look like when they are convinced not to support the district and then show up as if to say, I'm here to support the district. I just want to acknowledge, either it's going to be supporting and not dividing, or we're going to have to find a way to not put ourselves in a situation where we don't have the budget money because they are paying attention. Every last one of us on this dius knows that they are.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Daniels. Thank you for your comments and feedback. I'm going to share some thoughts on my perspective and how I'm going to, my rationale behind my, what, what my vote on this is, and then I'm going to call the vote. First, I want to thank the citizens. We had a couple of citizens today. We had a couple of citizens last week. Both sides, we got to see, weigh the pros and cons of both sides of the issue. That gives us the whole perspective. So thank you for providing that feedback to the board. As far as this program itself, it brings value. It has been documented to be a success in other school districts. Nobody is questioning that. Okay? It helps improve attendance. It helps improve graduation rate. Students get engaged in their education. This gives them hope that after graduation, they can matriculate. And some of these students, this provides an opportunity for them to go to school, earn an associate's degree, and make a wage that is much better than having to stop at, at high school. So the success and the value of this program is documented. It's also readily apparent from what has been shared out here that we do use K-12 education dollars right now for concurrent enrollment and post-secondary credits. Our students use that right now, using the general fund money. It is supported by the Colorado State Legislature. It's only expanding. So these Mitchell students have this opportunity right now to do that. And then there was the history that Mr. Kaiser shared, that the 2000 MLO, as it was written, did not support full-time kindergarten. So at that time, again, the community weighed in on that situation. I went and looked at that language of the 2000 MLO. It didn't say anything about, we need to support full-time kindergarten or anything of that nature at that time. So the board at that time weighed in and said this was a value educational need that is going to prepare our students. So the last question that was asked is, what is the intent and the expectation of the voter out there? And it's put out there, oh, the voter did not want the $200,000 for this, and people have gone and campaigned. And when they campaigned, now we are breaking the promise and the intent to the voter. And if you can pull up the slide that I sent you while I'm talking. I've had the opportunity too, in 2021, when we had the bond and we went outside and campaigned, knocked on doors and asked for the community to support the bond. And when we went and knocked on that community and asked for support for the bond, the question that was, came to me was, the community approved a 2017 MLO of which you received $42 million, which by 2021 had quadrupled. So what is the outcome for that investment that the community has made into school district 11? That's the single fundamental question that was posed to me. So here I have, and I know that this is only one measure that is out there, and there are different opinions on this that the state assessments that are given are not critical or important. But on the left, you have the 2017 district performance framework. And the district got accredited with an improvement plan with a score of 47.7. Five years from then, which was this year, 27, 22, after we've had five years of MLO and 220 million dollars extra, if we go back to the community, this is the question that they are going to hold us accountable for, the student outcome, which is lower than what it was five years back when we went to the community. Loss of trust when we are talking about, this is the loss of trust, not that they are going to hold us accountable for the $200,000 that so many of us have pointed out, that's half a percent of $49 million MLO. The loss of trust comes from when we are talking about taxpayers during this difficult, challenging times, willing to pay extra in property taxes for the educational outcomes of our students. And the academic achievement, you can go at the bottom of the screen and see the academic achievement, academic growth, post-secondary workforce readiness. Five years gap. I know that there was a pandemic in between. Granted. But this is where we are right now. And what we need to change and what this board, through these board priorities, have been pounding the board dius to change is to bring that accountability. I've asked the community to hold me accountable for improved student outcomes over and over again. I've asked the community to hold the board accountable for improved student outcomes, nothing more. We are in this for educating our students, providing a high-quality education for our students. I've, over and over again, this board has held Superintendent Nigal or one employee accountable so that he in turn can hold down the line, everybody accountable. The loss of trust comes from this, not from how this board is going to support $200,000 for supporting our Mitchell students. And I will end with this thing about Mitchell students. I said this in December when Mitchell High School was up here. We did not do right by Mitchell. When that reconstitution happened, we lost trust in that community. Staff were let go. Students and the students who were in that school, those are the students that are going to be in the graduating class at this time. Those students were freshmen, sophomore, I'm not sure what the timeline was when Mitchell was reconstituted. Those are the students that are graduating at this time. They felt they had uncertainty at the time because their school was reconstituted, shut down. The teachers that they had developed a relationship were let go. And several of our students went away, and these students came back to Mitchell High School. And we made a promise to them at the beginning of the year. And now going back on that promise is going to be a bigger liability for this board than anything, the $200,000 that is going to be the, and what Superintendent Nigal talked about, it's not even 200,000. It's going to be less than 100,000. I understand the principle of it. Okay? But it's still a promise. And as somebody said, it would be a Mitchell broken promise. So with that, I'm going to call, roll, roll call, Melissa. We called roll call. I had you opportunity to give a talk. Okay. Roll call. Roll call.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
No.
The ayes have it. The Mitchell, the Mill Levy Amendment for the Mitchell Promise passed with a 6-1 vote in support of it. Thank you for bringing this up, and good luck for the Mitchell students. We all look forward to seeing you at the Mitchell graduation next week with a promise from this board that we are committed by a margin of 6-1.
Can I just, now that we're through the vote, I just want to communicate to the community that I have certainly felt a lot of angst around the challenges that we've had to the funding of the Mitchell Promise. I joined this district under the premise of transformational change. Transformational change comes when you challenge the constant. Many of you have seen me draw my little thing about X plus Y equals C, and you get incremental change when you redefine the variables X plus Y. We can redefine the variables all day long, and we will just be moving the chairs on the deck of, we all know the rest of that analogy. We are challenging the constant here by saying, we want to be the school district that redefines pre-K to 14 as the expectation for all our students. We came in with a very clear, two-pronged approach in my first year, double down on universal pre-K, no matter what the state does. It's a win for students, it's a win for families, it's a win for our facilities team and the utilization of our buildings and our decotherms that we buy as we fill our buildings up. The other thing we doubled down on that we got really after in second semester was how it is that we think about high school. How do we use high school as defining your excellence through experience? This is an extension of that experience. District 11 has long been noted for its incredible work on CTE, dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, early college opportunities. Governor Polis was at Coronado High School yesterday signing an extension of a previous bill into law to continue to fund how it is that we get reimbursed for dollars for certifications for students who are challenging the constant. These are not children who are sitting in seven-period, 15-minute days of just didactic, direct instruction. Whether we as adults like it or not, the next generation's needs to be successful into the future of the world that they will inherit is fundamentally different than ours. We have to continue to press every chance that we get. I appreciate the board's support on this, thank you.
Thank you. And this is equity in action. I want to say to Mitchell community, this is equity in action. Lot of times, we talk about equity, and it's just words. This is backing it up with actions. And when, last year, some reconstitution happened within the departments, the board promised that we would back up equity through our departments and schools. And that's what this is. So it's easy to talk the talk, but it's difficult to back it up with a walk. And that's what this board did at this time. I hope the community understands that. Moving on to Mill Levy override plan amendment for the new program, for the PIP 2017-13 preschool enhancement to universal preschool program. This again, oh, let me make the motion. Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item C4?
I move the Board of Education approve the plan amendment to 2017 Mill Levy.
Right for the new PIP 2017-13 preschool enhancement to universal preschool program, UPK. This PIP would be funded annually at $600,000 for a two-year period beginning July 1, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this item was presented on May 10, and the board had a discussion at this time on this item. And just to remind the board, what we discussed at that time was, this could be, that is, first of all, there is a lot of uncertainty about how UPK is going to be funded by the state. So considering that uncertainty, and also the fact that this can be funded by general fund dollars, Mitchell Promise could not be funded by general fund dollars. This could, this can be funded by general fund dollars. So we can use some of our non-recurring contingency dollars to fund this without having to get it from the PIP, from the Mill Levy override. The second consideration is that this is about $600,000. At the end of the year, the board that will be in place at that time would have to consider levying the inflation clause at that time for this 2017 Mill Levy override. And it could be a significant inflation burden that would be on the table at that time. I'm not sure what that, it's going to be. It could be 5% or 6%, maybe even more, more, 8%? Okay, up to 8%. And I think all of us probably got property tax bills in our mail, and we saw what the impact has been, so we got to be judicious about it. And we, with the charter school additions, there is some, there is some commitment that we do have to support the inflation clause out there. But setting aside the $600,000 from this Mill Levy override to fund some of those charter costs that will come from the Mill Levy, it is some of the things that are in consideration. With that, do you have anything new to add, Chris, on this? Nothing more? Okay. Open it up for board questions on this or comments before I call for roll call. Director Daniels?
I'm just curious, with this program and enhancements that we're doing, do we have a way to make sure that it is successful and it's moving forward the way that we're planning for it? Because again, it will show up in the community if we don't manage it correctly. That is what happens in District 11. It's a strange dichotomy that happens here. One moment, it shows up like everybody's in, and then the next moment, they're like dividing it up. So do we make, how do we make sure that what we're doing, it legitimately is forwarding our priorities?
Yeah, so I can comment to that and take accountability going forward. As the superintendent representative on the El Paso County Joint Initiatives Panel for the state's universal pre-K program, the state is still developing those metrics. I would say most of the challenges right now for the state is to determine how much or if to fund three-year-old programs, particularly for three-year-olds that aren't qualifying by special ed needs. The state has been moving in a steady direction to continue to offer more and more money to this challenge as some schools have presented it as being a greater challenge for them to participate or not. We are leading the El Paso County region right now with 1,200-plus portal first-choice opportunities for three- and four-year-old positions. The neighboring districts that are of similar size in 20 and 49 are both in the mid-300 numbers. So that has us at a 3 to 1 outpaced position of grabbing enrollment and achievement opportunities going forward. What I have asked the community to think about of pre-K is not what it costs you for a pre-K program, it's what it costs you to not have a pre-K program. And so if there are families on the borders of D-20 and 49 that are coming to our portal to take advantage of our half-day and full-day programs, we believe that that gives us an enrollment opportunity for kindergarten roundup, that they can become full-time District 11 children going forward.
You have a follow-up question?
I know that we have a preschool program. I know that parents have enrolled their kids, three, four-year-old, four-year-olds in the program, and we're talking about enhancements? Just would like to know, what does enhancement look like with what the programs are currently?
Yes, I would say it's a continuation of our extremely strong early ed program. We lead the county in early ed programming. So I think we're actually outpacing what the state is calling for. These dollars are set-aside dollars in order to backfill this gap that's going to exist with how they fund three-year-old into the space. So these dollars that are on the table, and in agreeance with President Malpackham's comments from an MLO perspective, I think, I thought we thought about tabling, but there was an issue with tabling last week. This is not an ask of the administration for this MLO to be voted for approval. We have general fund solutions, and we see the state closing the gap every day. This came to the MLO override committee and then to the DAC Budget Subcommittee because the state had not started to commit those dollars.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, Dr. Bankus. Director Bankus?
Yes, I wanted to make sure. So may I just hear you say, Mr. Gall, that we have dollars to fund this program through general fund dollars?
We do have general fund dollars to be able to back up any gap that might exist at the state level with our full commitment to our community to be able to fill every pre-K portal that we've advertised.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Director Ott?
Thank you. Again, another great program that we, it looks like we will be able to fund, fortunately, this time with general fund money. So a no vote is a reasonable vote here. I want to say that to my fellow board members because this will still be funded, an excellent program. But for my part, I will be voting no again because of the same reasons mentioned earlier, the lack of support from the committee, and my concern about the future impact there. And we know we have a number of funds available for needs that this district has through the MLO funds. And I think we need to step back and look at what we can use those for that we know we have voter approval for. Thank you.
Before you call the vote, I also want to comment. I had an interesting conversation today with a very vocal community member, who will remain nameless, who happens to be on the MLLOOC. And none of the comments that happened in that conversation had anything to do with any of these topics or anything about funding or anything about the MLO because they don't participate in the Oversight Committee. And so while they were afforded time to talk about some of their other concerns, I do think there is a challenge for us to go forward and understand how it is that we're asking our community members to be members of so many different committees at such an exhaustive amount of time. So I do think it would be interesting for the board and the committees to consider, is there a way for merger of the DAC Budget Subcommittee and the MLLOOC as we go into next year where we can take active voice? Maybe it's a 2 to 1 vote that the MLLOOC original members get and they're, you know, coming from 2017. But some way that we stop continuing to tax our people to end up with six votes, holding a vote when there's only six people there. You know, I don't know if there's a Roberts Rules thing. I guess it ends up a no vote if it's a tie. But we're not setting ourselves up for success if we're taking a 2017 position and laying in only six active members to be able to make that information for the board's decision-making.
Yeah. Thank you for that feedback. I think some of it, we may be constrained by the ballot question itself. I think the ballot question specifically calls for a Mill Levy override Oversight Committee to be established. But it is obvious from these discussions, we do need to go and find new members to participate in that committee. So if you are listening, if you are a citizen, if you are listening, there are openings available in the Mill Levy Override Oversight Committee. Please reach out and be part of that committee. Seeing no further comments or questions, roll call.
Director Bankus?
No.
Director Daniels?
No.
Director Jorgensen?
No.
Director Loma?
No.
Director Malpackham?
No.
Director Nelson?
No.
Director Ott?
No.
This is the first time that I've been on the board, or even at the DAC.
It feels wrong.
Unanimous no. But that is with the understanding that this is going to get funded through other general fund money. So the motion fails. Yes. Moving on to the non-action item. We have Resolution 2023-38, Use of Portion of Beginning Fund Balance. This is new information. It's coming as non-action. And some of these next three or four resolutions usually happen at this time of the year. It's information that has to go through the normal board approval process. So new information, Superintendent Gall. I see Ms. Haronic up here.
I'll bring Ms. Haronic forward.
Okay.
For the short, swift ones before we get to the longer one.
So the next four items all have to do with our standard budget resolutions. I believe the first one is authorization to use beginning fund balance. We're required by law to acknowledge when we want to use our beginning fund balance and certify that it's not going to lead to an ongoing deficit. We always budget all of our fund balance as a reserve, and that's what we're asking for here. In the resolution, I've identified the amount of fund balance that we're spending and the specific non-recurring items that we would like to spend that on. That's all I have on.
Okay. Now, these have to come as action, right? They can go to consent?
I think we sometimes bring the non-budget ones, the one, the appropriation resolution is the last one. I think we do sometimes bring these others as consent items, but I'm willing to do whatever.
Okay. I just don't know what is allowed legally and all those things. So I'm not going to, you know, the board is not going to task you to do that. It can come as action item. But any questions on this before? Okay, seeing none. Let, oh, you do. I didn't see it, sorry.
I'll just make a brief comment that we've spent a lot of time previously looking at the budget, so we may not have questions tonight because we've already asked them. I don't want the community to wonder why we're not asking any questions. We've just already spent a lot of time on this.
Let's move to the next resolution, 2023-39, Designation of Fund Balance.
Okay, this is actually for this year's audit. This resolution just sets aside money for very specific purposes. This is required if you want to reserve amounts, such as our Tabor Reserve, multiple-year obligations that we're required to reserve, and then other items that the board typically reserves funds for, such as our instructional and non-instructional carryovers, encumbrances, which are contracts that we have in place this year that have not been fulfilled. We want to make sure we have funds set aside for those next year. And then we've also set aside some money for the school management system and the academic master plan.
Okay. Any thoughts, comments, or questions? From the board here, any first questions? Okay, Director Bankus?
No, I didn't have my hand up.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the next one.
Okay, this resolution authorized borrowing between the funds. This is sometimes necessary just due to the timing of cash flows. So for example, I've listed the Designated Purpose Grants Fund. A lot of our federal grants are reimbursement-based. We spend the money, we submit details of those expenditures, we get reimbursed. The Food Service Fund and the Production Printing Fund sometimes have startup expenditures. We just cover those. I've also included here our Risk Related Activities Fund. A lot of our money right now is tied up with TOLI, but we are going to have to start paying Kaiser Permanente in June, and we may need to borrow some money between funds. This is short-term borrowing. It does not actually affect the budget of any of these funds. It's just due to make the payments and the timing of when they get the money back.
Any questions on this? Okay. So no questions on resolutions, that's item number two, three, and four. Is the board, if it is, if Ms. Haronic can verify that that is, it's okay to move it to consent? Is the board okay in moving those to consent? Okay. So you can verify and make sure that it is appropriate to move these to consent, but if it has to return back as action, let it come back as action? With that, the final item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-41, Appropriation of the Fiscal Year 23-24 Budget. And again, this is new information. Do you need to set it up?
Yeah, I just want to set up and acknowledge all the hard work that the team has done, that our committees have done, particularly the DAC Budget Committee, as well as others, that have really been contributing to try and get us to a place where we have a budget that is aligned to our strategy. There have been a lot of found dollars over my first year here. Many of them have accumulated due to vacancies, which is its own set of challenges. But I have been of great appreciation and admiration to how quickly the team has shifted to see that getting to a space where we are as close as we possibly can be to our projected and allocated budget to our spend is a goal for us. There will always be inefficiencies in systems this large, and I'm also a in systems this large, and I'm also appreciative of how smartly we are reinvesting those dollars as either corrective action or going into future opportunity. But this is a first-year budget build of a multi-year process. Earlier in the year, the district created a relationship with a student or a school-based budgeting idea, which we will be migrating to over the next several years. And we have already seen those type of impacts coming into this build, although what you will see presented tonight is much more traditional in how we have built that budget. But the idea here is for us to build in transparency, equity, and accountability into our budgets. I like to call that T, TEA, such that everyone in our community understands where their tax dollars go, such that when we do get to these hard times, if they are forecast or in a request for more monies to advance our system going forward, people will be able to look and say, this is the type of budget that I both understand and that I believe in. And so we use the board priorities and the district strategy. And I was able to craft just a short couple of paragraphs that are in the front of the Budget Build Book that really just, again, make that connection to the most critical resource we have in our district is our people. They are funded by these dollars. Those two go hand in hand, and we will be working extremely diligently over the summer to bring those two bodies of work closer together, such that we are as effective and efficient with our dollars as possible to be able to realize stronger outcomes for our students. Laura?
Okay. The resolution itself just lists the dollar amounts that we would like to appropriate for each fund. I've also hung a complete, like, over 100-page book that details every single fund with a summary of the funds and additional details, line item by line item and program by program. I've also prepared a PowerPoint to try to highlight a lot of the changes to the general fund and key points. So, this first page, General Fund Assumptions. A lot of our budget is driven by student enrollment, so I've just put the enrollment assumptions in here that this budget is built on. Our traditional K-12 student enrollment, that number I have there is actually wrong. I caught this earlier. The traditional K-12 student enrollment in district enrolled schools is going to be 20,275. That number I have there actually includes the charter school number that's directly below it. That is an increase of 500 students from our actual enrollment last year. We're also projecting an increase in our charter school enrollment up to 1,800, 1,832. That's an increase of over 600 charter school enrolled students. That's due to the onboarding of two new charter schools. I've broken out the online students. We have two online programs, Spark and Achieve. We're estimating their enrollment at 557. I'm calling them out separate because they're funded at a slightly lower rate, so they affect our calculation. The funded student count, we will still be funded using a five-year averaging, which nets us a higher per pupil funded count than the actual count. The difference between the five-year average and the actual account is about 244 based on these projections. That's a reduction of 1,100 students from last year's funded count. If you take that student count times the per pupil revenue of 10,454, which is based on the latest run from CDE, that's also an increase of over $1,000 per pupil in the per pupil revenue. Our total program results about $240 million. I would like to point out that that is the majority of our general fund revenue. 86.8% of our general fund revenue comes from the School Finance Act and from this formula that's enrollment-driven. If you bring in the MLO transfers as a general fund revenue source, this is still 71% of our general fund revenue. This is a high-level overview of our resources and the uses of those resources. I'll get into more depth with these. Our beginning fund balance that we just appropriated, $126 million. I'm assuming a $14 million net income from this year. That will roll to next year. What that means is we didn't spend all of the money we brought in this year. That becomes a non-recurring resource that we can use next year. We just talked about revenue from the School Finance Act, $240 million. We have a few other revenues in the general fund, about $36 million. This includes things like interest income, indirects from grants, facility rentals, cell tower rentals, athletic fees, and some categorical funding from the state for things like gifted and talented, ELL, transportation, and sped. We transfer in quite a bit of money from our mill levy override fund. That accounts for 58% of the resources we budget in the general fund. And then we transfer some money out. This includes charter school transfers. This also includes transfers to our risk programs, our capital programs fund, and the fund balance projects that were more appropriately categorized as capital projects. I think one of them was like $11 million for safety and security improvements. We're going to fund those projects in the capital projects fund. We're transferring money to that fund and will appropriate it there. Total resources available for appropriation, $407 million. We're going to use those. School-based expenditures account for $265 million. Facilities, transportation, and central expenditures, $69 million. Reserves and assignments, $29 million. And then, undesignated contingencies are still at $44 million. I'll go over all of these in a little bit more detail. And I would also encourage you to look at the actual budget book as there is, like, programs with three-year history of actual expenditures, what the mid-year budget was, and what I'm asking for by each program this year. This is just to highlight where our revenue comes from. By far and away, state and local sources. We hardly get any federal revenue in the general fund. I don't want to downplay federal sources. It just almost, our entire Designated Purpose Grants Fund is federally funded, and that's about $90 million. But general fund money comes from the state equalization or from local property taxes. I broke out the portion that we transfer in from the mill levy override, but that is actually also local property taxes. All right. These are the expenditures. I've broken them down two different ways. This is broken down by program. By far and away, our biggest expenditure is instruction in the classroom. If it's called instruction, it is directly impacting students in an educational way. That's almost 59% of our expenditures. We have 7% in pupil services. That includes things like counseling, nursing, attendance, community liaisons, physical therapists. We have instructional staff support at 6.3% of our budgeted expenditures. That includes supervision of the instruction and curriculum. We have school-based, our school administration that includes principals and administrative office staff at the schools. General administration at 0.6%. That includes your superintendent, your Board of Education, election audits, stuff like that. Business services includes things like procurement, accounting, payroll, general business services at 1.2%. The maintenance and operations also includes security, custodians, and utilities. That's a big one. Transportation, I think, is self-explanatory. Central services includes both HR and IT. And then we have a few other programs such as adult ed, crossing guards, childcare, and volunteer services that are designated as other. So, the next slide, I've broken these down by account. This is the type of expenditure. You can see salaries are by far our biggest expense at 60, almost 64%, and benefits are another 20%. A total of 84% of our budget is directly related to employees. And I can tell you that due to the timing of when we reached an agreement with the various employee groups, I had to make some assumptions, and I believe our compensation budget may be a little bit low. I don't believe it materially impacts this budget, but I'll have to true that up a little bit. We also budget 5.9% for other purchase services, 7.1% for supplies, a little bit of equipment, and a few other things. This is just some significant new expenditures. I just tried to summarize these. I don't want to get into all of these in depth. There's a page in the budget book, I believe it is page 84, that lists all of the non-staffing budget increases. It's the same as what we used to call the IPR requests. I've broken those all out and detailed them. This is just a summary of some of them. Of some of the bigger ones, you can see that by far and away, compensation is the biggest, but we've also put some money towards curriculum, custodial support, utilities, CTE, and transportation needs. That's all I really have in the slide presentation. I think it's worth noting that as this budget was prepared, the mismatch is $7,754,000 as prepared. I do think the compensation is a little bit low, but I just didn't have time to get that all trued up. I would also like to point out that this budget document is the official approval of FTE. This is what you're budgeting as these employee groups. Those are shown on pages 73 to 76 of your budget book. I can tell you across all funds, we're asking for 2,006 teachers, 145 administrators, 160 professionals, 1,557 ESP, for a total ESP count of 3,867. That doesn't exactly correlate to the number of employees we have because some of them are part-time or whatever, you know, .2 or .5, but this is the total number of FTE that we're requesting.
And Laura, I did just want to correct for the board that prior to you coming in in the conversation on the changing of Tesla Middle School to a new location, we will come back for final approval. There may be one Z, two Z adjustments. There was a request for an additional ESP position as an administrator now that the board has given us the thumbs up on the contingency transfer to make that, change that workspace. So, there may have to be a one Z, two Z correction of that.
Okay. Whenever we deviate from the approved FTE, we always bring that to the board.
Right. So, just clarifying that for the community.
I, the entire budget book that is hung on board docs. Did we hang the PowerPoint?
This is on.
Okay.
Yeah.
After I fix the number.
Make the correction, and we'll send it to the board and hang it on board docs.
Okay. Yeah, that enrollment number was wrong. This is just a summary of some of your other funds. Again, within the proposed budget book, there is a balanced budget for each fund, and there's also like a board document that describes what that fund does and some of the highlights of that budget. And we've also broken down the FTE in each of these funds. I can tell you a little bit about risk management. This is where you fund all of your insurances, like property insurance, general liability, workers' comp, safety, et cetera. Preschool is obviously your preschool fund. Your Designated Purpose Grants Fund, this is federally funded. I know there's been a lot of questions about what we have left in ESAR. I believe we have ESAR scheduled for a work session on June 7th to give you an update on that. I've also included within the book in the back in extra details on pages 88 to 100, a complete breakdown of what we're budgeting with both the remaining ESAR II money and all of the ESAR III money, line-by-line detail on that. Also, within the Designated Purpose Grants budget itself on pages 33 to 36, every single grant we've budgeted is identified individually and what we're spending those funds on. Food service operations, I think, is self-explanatory. Student activity is money that's raised by the schools, you know, if they do fundraisers or clubs or, you know, if they charge student fees, we just put that directly in school accounts. The mill levy override fund, I think, is worth a little discussion. People always ask why I'm only budgeting $330,000. We transfer the money out of the mill levy override fund to the general fund where it's spent, and that's where it's appropriated. We don't want to appropriate it in both places. So, the $330,000 is what will actually be spent out of the mill levy override fund. I think it's also worth mentioning that due to the projected increase in charter enrollment, I had to plan to transfer charter schools, our first share of the MLO. That was more than the revenue we were bringing in without reducing a different PIP. So, I built in a very small inflationary increase, the minimum amount we could, to fund those charter schools without reducing any of the other PIPs. If in December we do not levy that, one of the other PIPs will have to be reduced because I will need to reduce that revenue. The Capital Reserve Capital Projects Fund, there's a complete list of every single project by school on pages 49 to 54. I had intended to, and the capital program manager gave me a few slides with like high-level details here, but due to my schedule today and that I just got them, I didn't get them into this presentation. So, I can add those and include them when I send this to you. But like I said, every single project is already called out in detail on those pages. The Risk Related Activities Fund is your benefits and your health insurance is by far the biggest portion of that, but it also includes dental vision, short-term disability, et cetera. Production Printing is your print shop, and then the Private Purpose Trust Fund is where we have a legal trust agreement with somebody that left us money. Usually that is used for scholarships. I think we have one trust that allows us to purchase some devices and connectivity-type things as well. I think that's all I have on this budget. Unless there are further questions, I encourage everyone to look at this budget. It is posted on the budget website as well as on the board docs.
And Laura did send it last night. It was at 5:32. So, it was hung, which would be just outside, well, maybe legal within the 24 hours of when it was presented. But we will get the updates and repost it. There was a lot going on yesterday that was influencing the budget, so.
I, this was a very light year with a lot of things, and I have done my best to incorporate everything I could. I feel confident that this budget will get us through.
So, appreciate all the work that you have put in. I know that you have worked long hours of late with all the negotiation conversations that are, that were happening over the past several weeks, too. Any thoughts, comments? I know that we've discussed budget to a great extent, even in the mid-year in March when the preliminary budget development assumptions came in front of the board. We had lengthy discussions about each new line item that was being introduced at that time. So, I know that compensation has been a big topic of conversation in the district. So, the community is aware of it. How much new money are we getting from the School Finance Act? And I know that information is in the PBDA. Roughly, how much new money are we getting from the School Finance Act this year?
So, the exact calculation based on our projected enrollment is $13,034,883.
About roughly $30 million.
Just over $30 million.
That's the new thing. Yeah. And I know that we are almost getting $1,000 extra per pupil funding per student. But because of declining enrollment, it doesn't translate one-to-one dollar into our general fund because if it's $1,000 extra dollars per student, it would mean with our enrollment at 22,000, it would mean almost $22 million that we would get.
Correct. We're losing, in our declining enrollment averaging, we're losing 1,100 students from our funded pupil count year over year.
Right. And that happened in, especially over the pandemic year when one year we ended up losing 1,500 students. I'm just.
Yeah, I've listed out in the actual budget. I've put a, because people have often asked me about the five-year averaging. On page 10, I've listed the five years, so you can see the exact years and the numbers of we've had in each of those years.
Okay. So, we are getting $13 million of new money, and roughly $13 million of new money. And I am looking at the tentative negotiations or agreement that we've come with all three employee groups, which will circle back to the board at some point in time. What we committed as a district to was, when I do the quick math up here, roughly about $23.5 million in recurring money in just compensation alone. So, we are getting $13 million of extra revenue, and we have committed to paying our staff $23.5 million, $10.5 million of more revenue than what is coming in. And so, if our staff feel devalued and sometimes they come and send us the email about fair pay, this is what the board had on the table for quite some time, you know? I mean, maybe it was a percent off or so, but where we ended up is $23.5 million. And this isn't a declining enrollment district when the concern that we have to weigh in is that if, I know that we are investing our money aggressively to turn around the school district, and I'm talking to the community here. I know that we are aggressively investing to turn around the school district through programs that Superintendent Gall has come up, through Mitchell's promise, through initiatives out there to turn around enrollment. And time will tell if we are going to be successful in that endeavor. But there is a distinct possibility, a year from now, we are looking at serious budget implications. This budget cycle, with all these challenges, we double down on hiring more teaching staff for our sped students and our ELL students. Okay? So, we are putting students first. We are putting staff first. $23.5 million in recurring money and approximately another $13.5 million, if I have the, I'm looking at your sources and users document up here, $13.5 million in non-recurring money for a total compensation of $37 million package. for a total compensation of $37 million package. Now think about that for a minute. We are getting $13 million in extra revenue from the state and we are putting $37 million in additional compensation for our staff. Almost 300% that is out there. I know some of it is tied in non-recurring compensation. But if more, and this is a historic pay raise, when the information comes out that teaching start, starting teacher salary, the email went out, it's going up from $41,667 to $50,000. And that is because we understand the budget challenges that our starting teachers face. Some of them are working two and three jobs to make ends meet. And we want them to focus instead on their well-being and have just one job and make a livable income. So we are doubling down on our staff, just similar to the board priorities that are up there. Okay, so anything else that you hear out there in social media is misinformation, is not the facts. These are the facts that are there on the table, $37 million that we are committing to our staff. And that's because we appreciate our staff. We value what they bring to the table. We understand that they work long, hard hours and the inflation cost and the cost of living has gone up. But this is all contingent on we as a school district collectively coming together, leaning forward and supporting our students and making sure our student needs are met. I shared that slide comparing where the district was in 2017 and where the district is in 2022. I came on the board in 2019 and I feel an obligation that I didn't fulfill what I was selected for, to turn the district around because in three years, this is where we are. I know that the pandemic is in between. So board members who have been here five, six years, that's the loss of trust that we need to go and explain to the community, not the $200,000 which we talked about in the Mitchell promise. So thank you for putting together this aggressive budget and I am glad that we can take care of our staff through these compensation. I hope you feel valued. In addition to that, just a couple of months back, the board approved a new healthcare package for you. Healthcare package which has more benefits. It's going to get lower at the end, out-of-pocket cost for you and better quality benefits too. So which several of our own staff came up here and said it's a win-win situation and said that this should have been done a while back. Okay, I'll come to her. Director Otte.
Honestly, there was so much that I've, I was gonna say I forgot, but no, I did write it down. Just to go back over the question of 500, or we, I, I think we've talked about this before, but I want to revisit it. We're talking about 500 student enrollment increase and that hasn't happened in many years. We didn't even break even. So I want to have that explained again to us and the public. And I realize, please, I don't need to be told again that it's the power of positive thinking. So just, is there any evidence that we are actually going to see an increase of even 100 students, much less 500?
Yeah, so David, can you, while I go on a soliloquy here for a minute, can you pull up the number of elementary students that we have? I think we briefed this a month or so ago over what we had at count. We were up like 230 something. But if you can reference that number for Director Otte. We are definitely leaning in on being specific building by building. Our projected enrollment is built on an algorithm that just takes the average of the loss over the last several years and didn't have a mechanism in it for our ability to say that we have new targeted strategies, we have new targeted marketing information coming in, we have the demographers study that gave us some strategies as well. So we went through with a fine-tooth comb by each building to consider where we thought we had capacity and where we thought we had growth and we had building leaders buy into those opportunities. There's a couple of reasons that we did that and I think this is also important for the community, especially around compensation conversations that we've just had. We held, we held staffing steady for this year. This is the first year that we didn't go through the normal 40 to 60 FTE cut across the district. Our fundamental belief is that in order for students to succeed, they need stabilized learning environments and stabilized learning environments come from schools not constantly having to make FTE adjustments. We have already shown through vacancies alone that we have much fluidity within our budgets to be able to absorb if we don't hit 500. Due to decreasing enrollment averaging, we are getting $1 million worth of risk. We're getting $5 million worth of opportunity on $1 million worth of risk because of decreasing enrollment averaging. So this is the year that we use that 500 to our advantage to be able to get the staffing allocations in the buildings to no longer start a year and tell a principal and/or worse, a teacher, a community and a student member that we believe that they will reach and exceed their learning potential by being in a combo class and by having a long-term sub. This is in conjunction with our partnership and the strong work that's come from HR in being the year that we have been hiring and advertising well before we have ever done before. We have to be certain that we believe that the solution for the district is the strongest instruction will produce the strongest outcomes for students. If we do not believe that, we have other strategies. We can get to consolidation, we can get to collapse, and we can get to closure. What we went with this year was every teacher who wants to be a part of District 11, we not only want them, we will give them the strongest professional development that they can find in the county and we will compensate them at ever-increasing rates compared to our neighbors. And so when this question comes up again and when this question comes up at whatever our enrollment is this year, take a look at the schools that are succeeding. You will see direct correlation between the growth and the achievement and the enrollment as well as in the long-term steady state of the teaching force that exists within that building. They are directly correlated. Teachers are not plug-and-play. It is, you cannot just pick teachers up off the street. You cannot just find them at the last minute. We leaned in and said if we find that we believe that we can get a net of 500 more, that means that we don't have to cut teachers and it also means that we're not then trying to hire them in September when the families do show up for the schools that they're showing up for.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments or thoughts? Director Bankus, I have a note that you had a question.
No, I don't, yeah, I don't have a question. What I do want to say to Laura is that was an incredible amount of work that you just put together and explained to us and very understandable words and graphs, and I appreciate that. And as Director Otte has said, it's a lot to digest, but I think your explanation teamed up with 114 pages, I think it is, that I scanned earlier. I know I can call and get those questions answered. I just want to acknowledge just the fine work that you've done in explaining all of the budget items and with the page references. That was terrific. My next thing is that I would like to support what Mr. Gall has just said as a longtime educator and former principal. I, I think that building trust relies on many things and one of those things is the steady expectation that when I enroll my child or when my child comes to school in the fall, if there are not enough kids in that class, I don't want to hear that my child is going to be moved into another classroom or that more kids are coming into the classroom to create a consolidation. I think trust is built with the predictability of parents' expectations, knowing that when they send their child to school, that they have the assurance that they are going to have a teacher that's going to be with them, that's highly qualified and is going to be in place for the entire year. This is a departure, this frame of thinking is a departure from many decades of past performance. And I think it's the right move to make and it's a bold one and I thank you, Mr. Gall, for making it.
Okay, thank you, Director Bankus. And as far as the enrollment goes for next year, time will tell. All we are doing is investing in aggressive strategies. I'm just writing down some of the things that we have even accomplished in the last year, all of which is new, that was not there in District 11, whether it is the pathway schools that are going to be opening up, including IB program at Steel. And now we are going to put into action the arts and the STEM and the outdoor pathway programs at various of our elementary schools, the expansion of the pre-K and hopefully that provides a pipeline into kindergarten and we can retain our students. The Mitchell promise that the board committed to, the free before and after-school programs at our elementary schools. All of these are new programs that have been put into place in the last year to attract more students in there. And, and these are only a portion of it. We doubled down on the 30 minutes of extra time at elementary schools so to catch up our kids coming out of the pandemic, invested that and provided teachers pay for that so that we can be more in line with surrounding districts what they had in elementary school. So, and now we have doubled down on $50,000 pay, starting pay for our teachers. All of it in the matter of a year and a half, okay? Creative, new, out-of-the-box thinking to turn around student enrollment and student, turn around District 11. In a way, with the aggressive compensation package that we put on the table to support our staff, we have mortgaged our future. If we don't turn around enrollment, we got to face some serious decisions a year down the road. That includes closing schools and cutting our current staff or cutting our programs. And those are the tough, difficult decisions we had to weigh as negotiations were going on. The same staff members who want fair pay could very well be out here next year fighting for their jobs if we don't turn around enrollment. And I'm just trying to be brutally honest here, not just trying to sugarcoat things. I'm speaking my heart out here. We are fighting for your jobs, staff members, by putting it out there. But it cannot happen from this board bias. It cannot happen from me, it cannot happen from him, it cannot. Superintendent Gall just shared, I think, a week or two weeks back, that we in District 11 are our own enemy. Okay, we go out there and we put our own district and schools down. It has to change. We all have to collectively lean in and that's what we want to do. We want District 11, this is the 150th year, centennial year. We want District 11 to be thriving 10 years from now. And over and over again, we keep hearing 20 years, this has been going on, 20 years, this has been going on. Then let's do something about it. That's what the voters elected us to do. Bring creative solutions to the table to change the narrative, not put the owners on administration and let them figure it out. The voters put their trust on us. And if I, in my four-year term, end and leave, I've said it over and over again, my one intention is to leave the district in a better place than where it was when I came in. And every one of us, whether it's the board member or staff that is working out there, if we take that attitude that we are going to leave this district a better place than where we left, then our students are always going to come first. We will thrive, we will succeed, we will turn around enrollment and I'm confident of that. Director Otte, you have a follow-up?
Well, not to that. I suspect we all are here for that purpose is to make the district better and leave it better than we found it. Just a query, in the last couple of years, we did have work sessions on the proposed budget packet and book, so I wanted to see if that was on the schedule.
Is that something the board wants?
I don't know.
Well, I'm asking. If the board wants something, I mean, we asked for questions right now and.
Yes, we, we, this will also give the community time to look it over though as well. And based on our public hearing tonight, maybe that's not of interest, but I'm just putting it forth that it has happened over past years. If we continue to review the budget and have additional questions, I'd like to know that there is an outlet for that. Thank you.
Well, when it returns back.
We do not have one schedule.
No, we don't have one schedule.
I just want to get that clear that there isn't currently one schedule.
It is the, certainly the will of the board if they want something where they feel a necessity for a work session on this topic. Personally, we, that's just one board member. We've discussed this so many times out there and I am comfortable where we are. It can circle back as an action item and when it comes back as an action item, we can certainly ask all the additional questions that we may have at that point in time. But I leave it up to the board. This is an ask from Director Otte. If four other board members want a work session on this topic, you can task me either now or at the end, or task the superintendent to make that happen and I can put that on the board agenda. Is that the will of the board at this time? Okay, good. We are comfortable where we are at. So when you, when we have additional questions, we can certainly bring it up. I encourage board members to send those additional, I mean, I didn't hear too many additional questions today when it was presented as a non-action item. I went into a little bit more comment than any other questions. Director Otte had a question, but I, when there are no questions now, I don't know why the necessity for a work session at a later point in time. Board members are expected to come prepared to every board meeting. I encourage all board members to send the questions to Laura between now. Right now, I'm not sure. I'll have to look at the board agenda and see when this is circling back as an action.
June 14th.
June 14th. So we have still time between now and June 14th when it is coming and circling back. So take all the time that you need. Spend some nights looking over the budget book and circle back and come and ask the questions if you need. Thank you, thank you for.
And just in acknowledgement, Laura represents an entire shop full of people who have been churning away and plugging numbers and verifying. And the collaborative and coordinated way at which the team at the end of the hallway in the right has spread themselves across the district is noteworthy. And so to not name any of them, but to name them all, we appreciate their support.
Thank you, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that the Board of Education adjourns.
Moved and seconded, Melissa, your own call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Otte?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the meeting is officially adjourned at 8:20 PM.